Welcome to the January 28, 2020 regular meeting. I will be speaking on behalf of Marita today as she has laryngitis. Madam Clerk.
Item one on the closed session agenda: Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, three cases pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2.
Public comment? Any comment from the Board? Seeing as there's none, we'll go to closed session. Welcome. We're reconvening the January 28, 2020 regular meeting for the Board of Supervisors, Calaveras County. I will be acting as Chair today in the stead of Ms. Calaway. She has laryngitis, so she's got a Calaveras frog in her throat. Madam Clerk.
Report of today's closed sessions. Item one: Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, three cases pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. There was no reportable action taken.
Can everyone please stand for the pledge? Ms. Moss Lewis, can you lead us?
A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Any county staff that would like to make any announcements? Public? Board members?
Thank you, Chair. We've got a Lions Club crab feed this Saturday night in Copropolis at the Black Creek facility, and it is well attended, so anybody's interested, it's a great way to help support our kids in that community.
General comment? Public comment?
Public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you. Public comment?
My name is Susan Treble. I live in Murfrees, and I am the fifth-generation citizen of Calaveras County. My great-great-grandfather, William Hutchinson, died on April 28, 1882, at the county's Gold Hill House Hospital, and he was buried in the adjacent county hospital cemetery. This cemetery has long been neglected and needs to be recognized and its graves protected. The Peak family of McCullumy Hill is also descended from William Hutchinson and supports this request to identify and preserve the cemetery. The Gold Hill House Hospital was located near the present intersection of Pool Station Road and Highway 49, serving the county between 1869 and 1891. Eighty-two individuals, eighty-two, were buried in the cemetery. When a new hospital was built at the site of the current government center, the former hospital land was sold, although the county retained ownership of the cemetery itself. This ownership is reflected on the current deed of the surrounding nine-acre parcel held by Stephen Sloan of Los Banes. The boundaries of the old cemetery plot, however, were not carefully recorded. An 1898 newspaper article lamented that the cemetery fence was not being maintained by the county and that cattle were grazing over the graves. This situation has continued until the present, and now only a general vicinity can be identified. I am requesting that the Board of Supervisors put the Gold Hill House Cemetery, Hospital Cemetery, on the agenda for their next meeting. For that meeting, I request that the Board of Supervisors undertake investigations to identify the boundaries of the county-owned cemetery parcel for these reasons. Number one, to release the landowner of the surrounding property from development restrictions resulting from having the county's undefined cemetery reserved within his parcel. Number two, to protect the county burial ground and respect those interred within its boundaries. Julia Costello and Judith Marvin of Foothill Resources, who conducted much of the research identifying the cemetery's location, can be contacted for additional comments or questions, and they are here today. Also, members of the Peak family, members of the Historical Society, are also here today. Thank you for your time.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Stomper, I have a public comment.
Oh, absolutely, sir. Please come forward. Everyone, Dr. Dean Colada.
Thank you.
Our county health.
Yes, the local health officer for Calaveras County. So I wanted to give the community an update on the 2019 coronavirus outbreak. So as most of you are aware, there's a worldwide outbreak of a respiratory illness that started in Wuhan, China, in December of 2019, and it's gotten to the point now where there's some degree of person-to-person transmission that's occurring, we know. The death toll's risen to 106 in China, with more than 4,565 cases in 16 countries, five cases in the United States and two cases confirmed in California residents. Now, the important thing is that all of the cases that have been confirmed in California and in the United States are in people who've had a travel history to China, so there's been no person-to-person transmission that's occurred locally here in the United States. So Calaveras County Public Health is working with our state and our federal public health partners in monitoring the situation. We've sent information to local hospitals and to the medical community about surveillance for suspect cases, how to take a travel history, and people who show up sick with a fever and respiratory symptoms and have traveled recently, within 14 days, to Wuhan, China especially. And the CDC and the Homeland, Department of Homeland Security, Customs and Border Protection are monitoring travel through Los Angeles International Airport, San Francisco Airport, JFK Airport in New York, and Atlanta for travelers who are coming in from China who might show up with symptoms of illness. So this is a rapidly evolving situation, and our local health department is working with our state and federal partners to ensure the safety of the residents of Calaveras County from this.
Thank you, sir. Looks like Mr. Moore.
I'm Will Moore in Rancho Calaveras, and a point of information about this pandemic, that the total death count, as he just said, was 106 in China. 2019, 6,600 Americans, 6,600 Americans died of ordinary flu. So there's a pretty big propaganda move going behind this whole epidemic thing.
Thank you. Any further public comment? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Would any Board members like to pull any of the items? Or staff?
Hi, this is Oscar Flamenco, Senior Department Analyst. I want to pull number five.
Number five. Thank you. Any further items pulled? Just the meeting minutes from, I'll pull number two from the meeting minutes of January 14. There was one absent here, so we'll vote on that separately.
Chair, I'll move the remainder.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. So we'll move on to item two, if there's any public, or any public comment on that. Item two, the meeting minutes from January 14. Any comment from the Board?
So moved.
Second.
Wait, why are they pulled?
There was one absent. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 4-0.
And one abstention.
And one abstention, yes, sir. Item number five, the Sheriff's Consent Item.
Item five is from the Sheriff's Office. To approve and authorize the Sheriff and/or undersheriff to execute inland boat operator and/or other training courses, reimbursement grant agreement number C1970602 with the State of California Department of Parks and Recreation in the amount of $6,200 for a term of 365 days from when the granting agency issues notice to proceed, and approve increase to revenue appropriation by $6,200 to revenue budget appropriations in object code 4480, state miscellaneous, increase by $700 expense appropriation in object code 5241, office expense, and increase by $5,500 expense appropriations in object code 5478, travel expense of budget unit 10100360, marine safety. Revenue and expense appropriation increases require a four-fifths vote of the Board.
Hi, the reason I pulled that is because the budget transfer form that associated with recommendation number two wasn't attached properly, so I just wanted to give you a chance to distribute this and make it available to the public in case they want that, but with me I have the budget transfer form associated with number two.
Any comment by the Board?
Yeah, how did I miss that? Usually I catch those.
I failed to say that it was a budget transfer on the language if you read number two, so I didn't make the connection, even though implicitly I say that it's a budget transfer.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Passes 5-0. I asked for it just prior. Being done with the consent agenda, we'll go to regular agenda. I would like to let everyone know that we will be moving number 20 to the front. The Administrative Office received a presentation on the county's airport layout plan to the front of the regular agenda.
Can we take five minutes to set up?
Absolutely. We'll take a seven-minute break.
Seven?
Moving item 20 to the forefront of the regular agenda.
Item 20 is from the Administrative Office. To receive a presentation on the county's airport layout plan.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Bonnie Rich Administration. This item comes to the Board to provide a presentation on the county's airport layout plan, which is simply a planning tool for development of future projects at the airport. The Federal Aviation Administration requires that the county have an updated airport layout plan about every seven to 10 years, and as we proceed to secure additional funding for design and rehabilitation and construction projects, we have to keep this plan up to date. The FAA has approved our airport layout plan, and the planning grant associated with this project has been successfully closed out. What I'd like to do is hand the podium over to Kathy Zankunella, our airport manager, who will give you a brief historical overview of the county airport, and then our aviation consultant, Representative Dave Dietz from Meeden Hunt, will go through the technical aspects of the airport layout plan, and then we will be available to answer any questions that you may have. And I have additional copies of the presentation for the public if you're interested. Kathy?
Thank you, Bonnie, and thank you, guys, for giving me the opportunity to give you a little preview of what has brought aviation to Calaveras County. It's really exciting. We probably have the best little airport in California. People just love to come here because of our personality at the airport. Back in 1947, believe it or not, the State Division of Aeronautics was handing out money and looking for a location for a new airport in Calaveras County, hopefully in the San Andres area. They looked at Toyon and they looked at where the old airport is located. Fortunately, that one, it was owned by Tuscornia, and Judge Smith Land was purchased for that. You'll see in the thing that Dave did for us here, there's some pictures of the process going through at that time, and although the dedication in here is 1982, but here's a picture of the old airport that, no county monies were invested in the airport at that time. It was built with volunteer labor, and thank goodness for Maury Erasmus, and he was very implemental in that, and Calaveras Cement Plant. They eventually had a couple of hangars out there, and they had a twin base there. Reggie Howell, old timers would know that name, flew out of there for the cement plant. This is just right outside San Andres. The trailer park is right off the end there now, and back of these trees is the Toyons and Terrace, but nothing was out there then. It was an ideal spot. Carol Kennedy was, actually, her husband, Jay Kennedy, worked at the cement plant, and she was an old-time pilot from New Orleans, actually, and she became the first resident manager there. She had a little trailer out at the airport. Calaveras Flying Club started there. It was, other than her salary, it was a self-sufficient airport. In 19, and that was done, basically, as you can see by the pictures there, the Division of Aeronautics is the one that prompted us, and Steve Teal was our senator and a doctor up here. He was all involved in that, and of course, Maury Erasmus. But the, in 1980, we got, we kind of grew the airport. It was substandard. It was 2,100 feet. People from the Bay Area, instructors down there, wouldn't let their students come into a lot of airport, examiners, and wouldn't let their people come up here because of the short runway. In fact, I had a cousin in the Bay Area, and he came up with his instructor, and I told the instructor, I says, you know, when David gets his license, where do you think he's going to go? He's going to come to San Andres, and you should be teaching them to come into these short airports. And anyway, that's past history, but it was needed to be redone, and we actually didn't have the use of a consultant for the first airport, but we got Hodges and Schutt to become our consultants for the new airport. And Dave here works for Meeden Hunt, which is the old Hodges and Schutt. It's the same consulting firm we've had the whole time, even though the FAA requires us every five years or so to make sure that he's not trying to get in our pockets, that he's being honest with us, and I love these guys. They are great, great people and easy to work with, but they're the ones that helped make up the, bring the information for the new airport. That original airport that the state gave us, $11,000 from gas money, that's what bought the property, and George Hubbard, Spuds Kravitz, for you old timers around here, know those names, they were all a part of that. The new airport, of course, is the old Guttenjerr Ranch, where we're at now, 93 acres. And we have, we had a flying club down at the old airport. Carol Kennedy had started that, and we are now getting another flying club up at our airport, although we have had instruction there all along, mainly because we had a float plane operation. Thank you, Terry. But we are starting a flying club again. Our airport is, when I became manager in 89, Brent Harrington made me manager, or asked me to be manager, and we have, I lost my train of thought. That's not like me. Anyway, I became manager in 89, and the first thing I learned when I became manager was if you're going to get federal and state grants, then you must have a separate fund for your airport income, and that's what our enterprise fund is now. We take not one dime out of the general fund, and I think it's very important that Supervisors know that, but also the general public. That's very important. We are a self-sufficient county entity, and we're very proud of that. Plus, the fact that everybody loves to come to Calaveras County Airport. It's absolutely beautiful. We have benches out in front. You guys can come out and have a lunch out there. You can walk around the runway. Just happen to have somebody there that will give you an airplane ride if you want that, and it's, this county is something to see from the air, and especially during these foggy times. Yesterday morning, I was out flying my little airplane. That's that blue and one red-white one you see flying around town. Everything was fogged around, and the airport was sitting right on top of it, clear as bill. We have a wonderful, wonderful unit there. We have great participation from the Flying Club. We have two fixed base operators, very successful aviation maintenance places there, and we are self-sufficient, and that's many what I wanted to let everybody understand. Dave?
My name is Dave Dietz. Am I coming through? Yes. I'll get there. Dave Dietz, Senior Project Planner with Meeden Hunt. What I thought I would do is just briefly run you through the key pages of the airport layout plans, just so you know what they are. County funds did help pay for this. As Kathy mentioned, you need to have one of these plans updated periodically to continue to receive federal grants. The grants at this class of airport are always 90%, so the county is coming up with 10%. There's also state funds potentially available to help you pay a share of the match. State usually runs out of those, but it is a competitive process. You may be able to help with that. The last time around, the reason the FAA asked the county to update it is, A, its age, it was about 10 years old. FAA design standards for taxiways had changed, and that became the focus of this ALP update, and the FAA developed a more extensive list, so your ALP went from three sheets to seven sheets. It actually doesn't contain any more information, really, but it's now bigger, but that's compliant with FAA standards. As part of this project, there was also a narrative report, which is a 10-page summary. I believe that's in your agenda package, and again, it's like an executive summary, what was looked at, what alternatives were considered, what issues were addressed. The other thing that was part of this project is what the FAA calls an AGIS survey, which is Airports GIS, and this is based upon aerial photography, and what it gives you is very accurate data on all of the obstructions within about two miles of the airport, and that's important to know what needs to be protected and what potential issues are if you get an improved instrument approach at the airport. So a lot of good data came out of this. First sheet's just an index sheet. The real key sheet is this sheet. It's called the Airport Layout Plan Sheet. It identifies all the future projects, the standards that have to be met. In terms of this last time around, the only changes from the prior version had to do with the taxiways. Because of runway incursion issues at major airports like Chicago, et cetera, where aircraft unintentionally go onto the runway, which can be obviously pretty exciting, they changed the standards, and so several things that existed at this airport, that, for example, connect the aircraft parking apron through a taxiway to the runway, will some parking apron, uh, through a taxiway to the runway, will sometime in the future have to be changed. Uh, at this airport, given the volume of operations and the size of aircraft and the lack of scheduled, uh, passenger service, that will be a lower priority. So that may be ten years from now, it may be never. What will likely trigger it is when you get to the point where the pavement's sold, you have to do a reconstruction. They'll say, construct it in the current standard spot rather than where it is, because the costs will be very similar. So my guess is that's where that will show up. Other than that, nothing else has changed on the airport layout plan in terms of where physical things would go. The airport is largely built out. There's really no room left for additional hangars, although it's possible, you might be able to squeeze in one or two. But basically, it's fully built out. So the ability to change the airport much is very limited, uh, due to the terrain. Uh, when the airport was built, they did have to do blasting in order to get a spot level enough to put in the runway. If you have any questions, just signal. Otherwise, I'll just blow through these. There's a second sheet, which is even less readable than the first, uh, which contains a whole bunch of tables to talk about how this airport compares to FAA standards. And so there's a column of what's supposed to be, and then what is. Um, this airport is fully compliant with everything except the location of some of the taxiways. Uh, if important to maintaining the viability of the airport is preserving the airport's airspace, and that is the area around it that needs to be, remain clear so aircraft can come and go safely. Uh, there are several sheets that relate to this. Um, they show obstructions. You can see this as plan and profile views. Fortunately, the airport's far enough out that, other than a few trees, there's nothing much that needs to be addressed. Uh, you'll notice that there's a red area on the left outside of that graphic, and that's where the terrain actually penetrates the airspace surface. But the reality is, this is a very clean airport with not any big issues on this. There's in a close-up view, the area's right off the end of the runway. It's a more detailed look of what was presented in the other sheet. Because you do have instrument departures here, and that is, people are able to take off into the clouds, so to speak, uh, with the properly equipped aircraft and properly trained pilot, these are the departure services that are desirable to maintain. These are not as absolute as the other, but they affect the type of minimums that you will have. And finally, uh, the FAA requires that you have a map that shows, uh, the property ownership and documents how it was acquired. Uh, their principal concern is whether there are any federal obligations because you use grant money, or because, and many other airports, not this one, um, that were passed over from the Department of Defense after World War II, which is how many airports in California came to be. So that's the set. It has been technically approved by the FAA, so now this is now the operative document for future grants. Uh, my expectation that ninety-nine percent of your grants are gonna be maintenance-related to keep your pavement in good condition. At some point in the future, the taxiway issues may come up, um, and that will be addressed at the time. This is all done through a roll, rolling five-year capital improvement program that the county maintains a list with the FAA. So normally, if the FAA is asking some out-of-the-ordinary thing to be done, there's at least a three-year lead time, which helps with budgets. Um, the county should always feel that if you have budget crunches and you need to try and negotiate when a particular development has to be done, know that you can negotiate that. You're dealing with a federal agency that's your banker in some sense on airport projects, but you always can say fiscal reality, fires, other things going on, major other capital improvements. So, you know, that's something you can always negotiate. Beyond that, I was gonna pass it back to Bonnie if none of you had any questions or anything you'd like to relay from the public.
I just wanted to let the board know, as Kathy pointed out, we are required by the FAA to go through a formal competitive selection process to secure an aviation consultant. They wanna make sure that, uh, we're getting qualified folks and, and, um, since they fund ninety percent of these, uh, grants, they wanna make sure we're getting, um, the best possible financial deal. We are working with the FAA right now to prepare requests for qualifications for both, uh, aviation planning consultant and architect engineer. The next step, once we get through, we intend to, uh, have that, both of those RFQs released next month. We'll be back likely sometime in March to have those awarded, so we can get, uh, enter into a new contract. It may be with a new consultant. It may be with Mead and Hunt again. We have to go through that process, uh, um, to have that determined. Um, but then, um, as, uh, Dave pointed out, the next project will be a design project, which is pointed out in the, um, narrative document that was attached to the agenda item. And so that would be a hundred and ninety thousand dollar design of runway pavement rehabilitation. And again, to reiterate what Kathy pointed out, uh, even though it's ninety percent federal, five percent state, five percent local, um, the enterprise fund currently has, uh, the, uh, budget available to fund this next phase of the project. So that's all I have to add.
Any, uh, board comments or questions?
Can we get a?
We. Supervisor Gary Mindy.
Thank you. Can we get Calaveras written on the new pavement, like it used to be? The old pictures have Calaveras written across your runway. Um, do we get to do that anymore, or is that?
The old one did not. Pictures that have Calaveras on it, it's the new one.
Right, but on the new one, can we get it done again? Pardon? With a big green frog, right? The people know where they're going.
Glow in the dark, paint?
I have a couple of questions from Ms. Callaway. Uh, what will be the final length of the runway?
Yeah, the, the runway is thirty-six hundred feet, and that is the final length.
Thirty-six hundred feet?
Yeah, they, we had talked about, uh, years ago in, in there that we've, we've, uh, to extend it, uh, into Stevens property or there, but that's not been determined. That's, that won't, I doubt that would ever happen. Not in my lifetime, anyway.
That was a carryover from the prior plan.
Yeah.
We discussed dropping it, but the reality is, keep it in place in case need changes. It's already in the system, but there's no obligation.
Yeah.
And you would have to show a change in circumstances to get FAA funds. They will not just routinely extend it. But again, that's a carryover. That wasn't any sort of defined need.
We've got plenty of room up there on top of the hill. Kathy, have the neighbors been notified about the plan, the update plan?
Repeat what she said.
Have the neighbors been notified about the update plan?
Uh, the, we need, no need to let anybody know. I mean, this is not, we're not changing anything. If we were to change it, then yes, we would notify neighbors.
Anything else? Supervisor Callaway? Any other? Supervisor Mills?
Well, just real quickly, it's a, it's a much cleaner airport to come into than, say, Columbia. And the challenges coming up, you know, over that ravine.
It is a very-
And then we're over the top of Gold Springs Estates there, when others, a lot of housing, um, and your clearance, your clearance areas on that final approach are very tight in Columbia.
Everything is good.
Yeah, and, and you know that we get a lot of bouncing and jostling, so to speak, on, on final approach into Columbia, which we do not experience coming into Calaveras, simply because of the train and the layout. So it's a very clean airport for-
It's a very good airport. Thank you.
Even for trainee.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Gary Mindy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, besides just Calaveras and a green frog on it, which is kinda fun, but-
You want to see a green frog next?
You know, Kathy, you've done such a great job at this airport over, over a long period of time. This is a draw for our community. It's self-sufficient. It brings people in, is part of our tourist base as well. Um, are there things that this board should be considering regarding the airport that we could make it even, for lack of good English, more better?
Extend my life.
Well, if there are things, let us know.
Oh, we certainly will. And you've been, the board's been, all the boards have been very, in my thirty-one years of doing this as a manager, everyone has been very helpful over here at the county. I've never had any problems.
Well, there's, it's an asset to our community, so-
And if I, and if I do, I'll let you know.
I'm sure you will. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to, uh, give ourselves a pat on the back in front of you.
They deserve it.
Thank you for your time. Seeing, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. I'm seeing this is only informational item. So there's no need for a vote?
Do you want to take a full-minute break to allow them to take down their presentation cut?
Yes, Madam Clerk. We'll, we'll be taking a few-minute break, undetermined amount of time. We will, uh, be moving item sixteen into the place of twenty. Their consultant won't be here till ten-thirty, so we'll move on to item seventeen.
Item seventeen is from Human Resources. To introduce, after a waiver of the reading requirements, an ordinance amending sections two dot six four dot three nine five and two dot six four dash four four zero of the Calaveras County Code, changing the salary anniversary date for anniversary-level probationary employees to twenty-six pay periods, and authorize a summary publication of the ordinance.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. The ordinance that I am bringing before you today is just, we are codifying a, the ordinance in two thousand and five, uh, the members of the board, which included, um, Chair Callaway, passed a resolution changing merit increases for the unrepresented employees from twenty-six pay periods, from thirteen pay periods to twenty-six pay periods. And so this ordinance today, we are just codifying the ordinance. The practice since two thousand and five has been, um, merit increases with a, uh, above stand, uh, with a good performance evaluation is done at, um, twenty-six pay periods. I think it's fifty. And I did include the original resolution in the packet.
Any comments from the board? Questions? Public comment.
Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back.
Entertain a motion or further question?
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Toffenelli?
Second.
Thank you. Supervisor Mills, we got a, we got a, uh, motion by Supervisor Toffenelli, a second by Supervisor Mills.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Pass this five-zero.
Item eighteen is from Public Works. To receive an update from Public Works on disaster recovery activity throughout Calaveras County.
There's no PowerPoint.
More PowerPoint. A lot of PowerPoint.
The item says nine. I don't wanna shut you down.
I have PowerPoint, so I apologize for the mistake.
We like your PowerPoint. I know it's due very well.
Thank you.
It was expected.
It's been a year trying to beat PowerPoint. How was that flight back from Wuhan Province?
Oh, dear.
(mimicking a child's voice).
What?
(laughing). Can you please repeat that?
You know, Josh, if you're gonna keep using stock photos, you can change them up.
It works for me, so.
Yeah, the, the dream family. I, I'm gonna need to start put, forward that one to me, so I can-
(laughing). I'm just not proud of my own family, so. My wife's gonna watch these back and be very disappointed in me. All right, uh, thank you for your, uh, for your patience. I'll be double that, be sure it's not on.
All right, uh, good morning, Chair Callaway and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Joshua Pack. I'm your Director of Public Works and Transportation, and I'm here to give you an update on disaster recovery efforts related to projects managed and administered by Public Works. Um, similar to Supervisor Callaway, I am fighting a little bit of a bug, so I apologize for, uh, the, uh, little fluctuation in my voice, but, um, I will, I will soldier on. Today, we're gonna talk about, uh, a couple of different instances. Uh, this board in the past has received updates on what Public Works is doing on the Butte Fire Project, as well as the winter storms. One thing that's a little bit new this time around is the twenty-nineteen winter storms. Uh, we have a lot of, um, moving parts on that. This is the first opportunity for somewhat of a deep dive on the twenty-nineteen winter storms. Uh, something that's a little different, too, and this is on request, is the box in blue, um, now includes the total budget, uh, updated budget estimates, as well as local funding source and local matches. And so the goal with this is to give you an idea of how much we think it's gonna cost, how much, um, through local revenue, and then how much we need, uh, we anticipate or hope to receive in reimbursements. And this is really important because we realize that every dollar we get in reimbursements from our state and federal partners can then be reinvested, um, in the future in programs and projects important to the board. So the first project I'm gonna highlight is the Butte Fire. Um, the, uh, with this one, uh, this is two phases. I think you're pretty familiar with that. Uh, the Phase One work related to Public Works, and the repair of roads in the Butte Fire area is essentially complete, has been complete for some time. Uh, Phase Two has seen delays. Uh, we don't have a, an end date on, on when those will be resolved. Cal OES and FEMA had worked with us to try and close out the project, and they have an interest in closing out the project due to the long timeframe between when it was open. Now, the interesting thing with this one is Cal OES has expressed an interest with us, uh, instead of waiting to close this out, uh, to potentially reimburse the county the difference in funding and the amount of about one-point-six million dollars, uh, for equipment. And then, under their program, uh, Cal OES and FEMA would fund the equipment necessary to do the repairs at a later date. And so instead of waiting for years to give us the money, instead, they would give us the money now, and when the repairs are, are done later, we would do that with our local forces with the equipment. For me, that's a wonderful opportunity, uh, A, that we are in a position that we can do that work, and number two, with our, um, with our gap in, um, resources relating to equipment, this is an opportunity to leverage local funding, uh, to get a much bigger investment in our equipment. Now, with this, I have proposed utilizing, um, road, road funds in the, uh, in our equipment maintenance replacement program. We have, I think, three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand dollars annually, uh, for the replacement of equipment. And for me, this is a valuable, um, opportunity to utilize that budget to get a much higher percentage. And so, and again, um, using general fund for that doesn't seem like an appropriate use. It seems like we have the budget, uh, we can potentially do that. So, um, I'm not familiar with this program. Um, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Josh. Um, so we have, we are buying a lot of equipment to do the Butte Fire roads. Is this going to be in addition to that equipment, or is this replacing?
This is in addition to that equipment. So, um, a lot of the equipment with the Butte Fire has already been purchased.
Right.
Um, and this is in addition, too. So our, our budget, I have a, um, a draft of an equipment replacement plan. Um, we have, due to the many years of lack of purchasing of equipment, we have a huge deficit. So, uh, it's, I think it's eight or nine million dollars in deficit of equipment. So this gets us, uh, some much-needed equipment. Um, and again, it, it's kind of a win-win, 'cause FEMA can close the project out, which is what they wanna do, uh, and we can get the, the resources necessary to do the repairs. And we can continue, utilize those resources for many years or decades to come.
And so this is a change from us fronting the bill and then getting reimbursed. They're gonna give us the money, and then we report out on how we did with it.
As far as I'm aware, this is a new program. I was not aware of this until we met with, uh, the Cal OES representative, and he's the one that broached it to us. Uh, and so when we heard that, you know, we, you know, we're a little, you know, FEMA's, you know, we're, we're not entirely, you know, is this, is this true, is this correct? They've done this prior with other organizations, uh, no one locally in California that I'm aware of, but they have been doing this- this in other disasters. And so we are pursuing this. There's no risk to this. The greatest risk is they say no. And so there's zero out-of-pocket expenses minus our efforts to pursue this. The potential for the, like I said, of expending $260,000 of road fund in equipment replacement and in turn getting $1.6 million of equipment, to me, is a valuable opportunity. So, yeah.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, Josh, you're saying the $1.6 million is listed up there in Phase 2. We haven't, we haven't expended any county funds on that as of yet.
Yeah, of that portion, we haven't. So no work's been done on Phase 2 because that hasn't started. And what we had was a total amount. So with that particular PW number, project number, we had about $2 million that FEMA had put, had identified. We've only spent $328,000 to date. So there's this large remaining portion that we were talking about closing out because there's not a lot of work left related to road damage from, and I think the estimate was much higher than what the actual repairs were. And so in this case, FEMA is actually making the suggestion to use that money for equipment, which, you know, like I said, it's a unique program to us. We weren't familiar with it, but that opportunity is worth pursuing, in our opinion.
So that would include the $328,000 in Phase 1. We would not get separate reimbursement to general fund for that. What they're proposing is for Phase 1 and Phase 2?
No, it's for Phase 2 only. So Phase 1 work's done. So that $328,000 has already been expended on road repair projects. The local match of $20,000 is part of that. This part is to do work in Phase 2. And so essentially, they call Phase 2 work done. And then it's up to our discretion to do any work that's necessary once the, once Phase 2 begins on the roadside of things. So.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, thank you, Josh. So when you say done, that means that there will be no oversight from them to ensure that anything is completed beyond that point, or any funds are expended beyond that point. They walk away at that?
Yeah.
They write the check and walk away?
And I, I'm speaking a little bit, we've never done this before, right?
Right.
So this is a little bit of conjecture, but that's why they're interested in doing this. They want to close it out. Because FEMA has had this on the books for, you know, four years now, four-plus years, and part of their suggestion is just close it out. And then they're not on the hook for the local repairs. The locals are responsible for doing the repairs, which a lot of them are synonymous with the Butte Fire PG&E restoration efforts. So that's another reason why we have an interest there, is we can use that equipment here. We have a different opportunity to potentially do that work, which we already have planned as part of a separate effort, and now we have additional equipment on top of that. And then I can adjust my budget accordingly, you know, to account for that in the future.
So we're going to basically sign off that they have no obligation beyond that point, and there will be no feedback from them as to whether or not we complete any of the work, should it not be completed? There's, in other words, what's all?
Yeah, you know, with this, I think it's, we're going to still need to document the work that we perform. There, you know, there's always the likelihood of an audit in the future, so.
That's where I was going to go.
And so we need to make sure when we do perform work related to that, we're documenting that. And so I, that's going to be part of our process moving forward. Whether they audit us in the future or they don't audit us in the future, we still need to do that to make sure they don't come back four years down the road and go, okay, did you use that equipment? And we say no, and then they come back and try to take some of it.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned the A-word before I did.
Fair enough.
Because that's, it's always sitting in the back of our mind as to what the federal government may ask us to prove in the future.
And we've been, you know, from Public Works and from other perspectives, the audit word's not new. We deal with that with all of our federally funded projects. So we are very familiar and cognizant of the work we need to do to make sure we withstand a future audit if it occurs.
Thank you. I was just going to agree with Supervisor Mills. He hit the points, but yeah, sometimes when something's too good to be true, read the fine print, but it seems like a great thing, I guess.
Yeah, and I'm with you, too. It's, it's one of those, you know, it is, seems a little too good to be true. We'll believe it when we see it. We don't see risk here. Like, the worst-case scenario is we put the application and it's rejected, then we're not out-of-pocket any expenses minus our efforts to put the closure package together. So, you know, it's not like a high-risk, high-reward here. I think there's really no risk. And then we just, like you said, like Supervisor Mills and yourself said, we need to be very aware that we continue to perform this work and document that work properly.
One question. Phase 1 being done?
Yes.
Was it contingent on closing these out, that Phase 1 and Phase 2 be done? So this is actually bringing back the money of the $328,000 at the same time?
Yes. And so that's another thing, is that they don't pair out the money in phases. They wait till it's completed. And there's a couple other slides. I'll talk about that issue, too, that we, so this is an opportunity to recoup that additional funding as well. So that's, again, why we're motivated to close it out now. We can recoup that $328,000 and then have the opportunity for much more.
Would you like to say something, Mr. Sgaya?
Quick comment on FEMA alternate projects. There's a policy on it. It's been in existence since 2001. It may be new to us, but other counties in California have exercised this. Most recently, in Paradise, Butte County abandoned a bridge project under the same provisions that we'd be looking at here. So it's, it's not as if we'd be, you know, breaking new ground. It'd be new ground for us to consider it, but the policy provisions are pretty clear on how we'd go about doing it. And I've sent those to you and, you and John, so you have them.
Great, thank you. Okay. So moving on, the next, oh, and the last thing I want to say about that is we're in the process of collecting bids. So FEMA wants to see our actual quotes for the equipment. So we're in the process of collecting that. I think we've got about half of them in, and the other half are still out floating around. Once we have that, we'll be issuing the closure notices. And the one thing I want to highlight here is while PW 88 is ours, there's still two other projects that I believe OES and Admin will be talking about here in the next item in your agenda. And we continue to coordinate and collaborate with both Admin and the Auditor Control on the closeout of those projects. We've been assisting firsthand on some of the closeout efforts. So we realize this is a group effort to make sure we can close these out as completely and accurately as possible. The next projects, the next five, these are ones I've reached out to you in the past. These are updates to a lot of these. The first one is Murphy's Drive. I'm pleased to announce that project is essentially complete. Work began in September 2019 by K.W. Emerson. Our crews went in at the very end. There was a little bit of work left to do. Our crews put the finishing touches on and opened the road to the public December 12th. There are a couple of what we call punchless items. They're just little minor cleanup items that need to be completed. Once those are done and the contractor submits their appropriate paperwork, we'll be bringing a notice of completion to the Board. And then once the Board does adopt that notice of completion, if you adopt it, we'll be beginning working with OES, Admin, and the Auditor Control to close that project out. So I have here in the winter, that'll probably go late winter, more likely into the early spring. But that notice of completion will be the springboard for us to begin the potential reimbursement process through, through CAL OES and FEMA. The next project, the next two projects, Haver and Blagan, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One thing, a question from Supervisor Callaway. On the Murphy's project, will, will the dip stay?
Yeah, so the dip is going to stay. We do have some signage that's post, that's recommended. It's actually on order to put dip signs there. Interesting enough, and the reason it was designed that way, to allow overflow. So it is designed to overtop under, like, five-year storm durations and greater. And so that dip kind of acts as a, as a weir to get that water channelized and down the appropriate way. So it's a design feature that was meant to be there. And we've had a couple of small complaints, in particular concerns on oversized vehicles. I think really large vehicles may have to use Flanders as an alternate and Douglas as an alternate. But one of the benefits that we've heard from the community that wasn't intended is speeds. There was concerns of high vehicle speeds going along Murphy's now that you've got a straight shot. We've heard that the dip is slowing people down. And so kind of unintended, you know, benefit of the dip is actually slowing vehicles. We do have a little bit of work left to do. The dip signage needs to go in. We, we've talked about maybe putting some channelizers or some things to maybe make it a little more visible. We've heard concerns about snow and icing. We did brush the concrete at the end to give a little rougher texture, to improve friction. I haven't seen firsthand, either myself or my crews, haven't seen the issues that we've heard from a couple of residents, but we will continue to monitor it. And if we do see any continuing issues, we are in the position to make appropriate safety measures as necessary.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, the question would be then, is, is we're going to have the accounting on this completely closed out in this fiscal year, or are we expecting to extend it?
Yeah, that's a good question. My hope is to have, and the devil's in the details, but my hope is to have the closeout work submitted to FEMA by the end of June. Whether, now, the FEMA reimbursement process takes quite some time. So the actual reimbursement side of things, likely not. That'll probably be the following fiscal year. But I think you're going to see us closing out this project and having all of our paperwork in the FEMA before the end of the fiscal year.
So you're saying large equipment can't get across that ridge? Fire trucks would not be able to pass if there's an emergency?
No, I, so we've done a little bit of discussion with fire. That concern hasn't been broached with us. So I think standard fire engines can get through with a little bit of care. The concerns we've heard are low-profile vehicles, Corvettes, sports vehicles, as well as really long RVs, you know, long-stretch RVs that maybe are low to the ground. So there is an alternate. I, we've talked, like I said, we've talked briefly with Murphy's Fire District and the Fire Districts up there. That concern hasn't been broached with us. If it does become a concern, there's a little bit of work we can do to try and improve that approach. And we do have some plans in the summer to go up here and do a little bit of miscellaneous work on the road, in particular, some paving that needs to get done. There may be an opportunity to kind of get an incremental improvement as necessary. We could float out the asphalt a little bit more to try and ease that transition, which could help. But like I said, right now, I've heard the concern, but we haven't heard, you know, indirectly from residents, but I have not seen firsthand knowledge, or I've not heard firsthand any of that actually occurring. And like I said, the fire departments have been pretty good at letting us know that feedback. We have not heard back from them. Doesn't mean that it's not out there. It just means they haven't reported that to us. All right. So moving on to Haver Road. Now, Haver Road and Blagan are in a similar boat where they're in a similar step right now. So Haver Road, if you're familiar, we did try to bid this and advertise it late last year. We got one bid. It was deemed to be non-responsive, and so we rejected that bid. We are back out to bid right now. The bids have been opened and extended to February 2020. So we're anticipating bringing a contract to the Board to approve construction hopefully in spring. Now, the permit restrictions with this and with Blagan have a pretty limited window. The permit restrictions allow us to begin work between June 1st and October 31st. And so in this case, we think we're going to be in a good position to start this summer and get this done before the fall. So we've seen a lot of feedback and input online suggesting that we might, we will likely have a more competitive bidding process this time around. Blagan Road, so similar, similar to Haver, there is current access. We have a temporary bridge. It's currently in place. All of our permits, all of our environmental work has been completed. The project was advertised briefly. We received some comments and feedback from contractors. Instead of issuing a series of amendments, we decided to pull it back and review the contractor feedback. We'll be reissuing that back out here in the near future. We'll anticipate opening those bids in late winter. And this, similar to Haver, is that this has restrictions on its timeline. We can do the work between June and November 1st. And so this case, we're looking at the summer, although we'll be potentially having a public meeting to discuss with the residents, as well as meeting with CCWD, the Forest Service, and the Moose Lodge to work with them to find what that timeline is that's best for them. My early inclination, due to the recreational activities out there, is that this project is best scheduled in September and October to minimize the impacts to the recreating traffic, or the recreating public and the community at large. But we're going to use the feedback from the public to potentially drive that schedule a little bit, to try and minimize the impacts to them.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
So construction schedule to begin in summer of 2020?
Yeah.
And you won't open the bids till late winter of 2020?
Yeah.
(laughing)
This is this winter. So it's winter 2020 right now. So.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're anticipating opening bridges in March, in March.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah. So Gwin Mine and Canyon View are the last two of the projects, and those are in similar situations as well. So the good news on Gwin Mine, we have our permits. That's a big hurdle for both the Water Board and the Department of Fish and Wildlife. Now, the original scope of Gwin Mine only included preliminary engineering. And so when we finished our preliminary engineering, we submitted a scope change to FEMA to request additional funding for the expanded project. FEMA did approve that in October, and so we do have the funding. You see increased budget totals to reflect that increased amount. The one thing with FEMA, and this is going to be a running theme in the next couple of slides, is that their environmental review has to be completed before we begin a project. And we've been seeing some lags, lagging time on their environmental review, due in part to the large number of other disaster projects throughout the country. So we are waiting for that. We anticipate that being done in the spring. So once that FEMA environmental review is completed, we'll be in a position to begin construction. We anticipate doing this construction sometime in the summer, so.
Is this federal or state review?
Federal. So this is.
DPA?
Yeah. So not to dive too much into the weeds. So statewide, this is a categorical exemption. It's a, it's a, it's a.
Right.
It's a pretty clean. Federally, it is, too, but the feds still have to do their paperwork to classify that as a categorical exclusion. And they haven't done that yet. So in reality, there's not a lot of work to do on their behalf, but they haven't started it yet. So we've continued to reach out to them, ask for them the feedback. The feedback I've heard anecdotally is four to six months. It takes them to do that. We're in the four month period right now, four to five-month period. So ideally, we'd hope to see this in the next month or so.
Let's talk offline.
Fair enough. So the next project is Canyon View. It's in a similar boat. When we originally, when we started this design, we realized that the hillside needed significantly more stability and efforts through retaining walls and other measures. So we had to do a scope change with that as well. So in November, FEMA did grant the scope change and the additional funding necessary for that additional work. Similar to Canyon View, we are waiting on the FEMA process to approve the environmental. This one's a little more complicated on the environmental side, although I still believe it's going to trigger a minimal categorical exclusion on the federal side. We've already, I believe we've already done our categorical exemption on the state side. We've done that here internally. And so once that's done, we can start construction. My feeling is this is probably a late-summer project. Again, this is all contingent on FEMA getting us the necessary categorical exclusion, the environmental approval to begin construction. All right. So shifting into the 2019 winter storms, and I, again, I think this is your first, in the public's first, deep dive on the damage relating from those storms. And initially, we believe the damage is in excess of $4 million. And I think when you look at the damage from the 2019 winter storm, plus the 2017 storms, tree mortality, Butte Fire, it becomes very clear why we are so aggressive and at pursuing federal funds. Because the general fund or the road fund can't absorb these sort of continued hits from Mother Nature, and again, why we must rely on it. And it becomes, just speaking an op-ed here, it's very frustrating because the public wants to see these done, and I want to see these done, and I want to deliver these projects, but we have to rely on our federal partners. And with the federal partners and the federal money comes the process and the bureaucracy and the red tape. And so we'll talk a little bit about that, but, you know, we've really, you know, we've really struggled with just the long lead times that FEMA has, even more than what it was three years ago when we went through the 2017 winter storms. Now, we are working with our partners. The one other thing I want to highlight, too, is the declaration on this came much later than our other disasters. Butte Fire came pretty quickly. The 2017 storms came pretty quickly. The federal declaration came three months after the original state declaration in February. And so this has kind of caused a little bit of delay, too, because we had a little uncertainty on whether it was going to be a federally-declared disaster or not. So the way FEMA works, and it's, and I'm going to do a quick dive on this, hopefully don't get too deep, is FEMA breaks down their projects into three categories. And for us, category B is the first work. That's the emergency protective measures. That's your triage. So making sure the site is safe for the public, making sure there's no immediate safety hazards. Category A is debris removal. That's getting all that muck and junk and debris and rock and slash out of the road so you can actually do the repairs. And then category C is permanent restoration. That's the repairs necessary to bring the road back up to its original condition. We also deal with, FEMA's not our only partner. We deal with Federal Highways Administration, and their partner on the state level is Caltrans. And so the threshold for that generally is local roads are kind of dealt with on the FEMA path or FEMA track, and collector roads and roads in what we call the National Highway System are, go through the FHWA and Caltrans path. And so you've got a lot of different work to do, and some roads qualify under some paths and some qualify under underpass. So we have to work with all of those state and federal partners as part of the process. So it's, it's complicated. It's time-consuming. There's a lot of bureaucracy, but again, we're fully committed to the process.
Josh?
Yeah, go ahead.
Back up just a second.
Sure.
Because I'm talking about, we let out contracts on category A for debris removal already.
Yep.
And yet, there seems to be some delay in. already, and yet there seems to be some delay in getting...
Yeah, and I'm going to hit that on, not this next slide, but the following slide. I have a full update on that, but very good foresight on what we're going to be talking about here in a second. Category B, the emergency protective measures, is essentially complete. And you can see in the really small font that we have a lot of roads, but not a lot of money. And that was because there wasn't a lot, most of it was done by our local forces, and there wasn't a lot of work to actually make them safe. Debris was on the road, trees fall over, rocks fall, and we get that off and we get that road up into the public. The work itself wasn't dramatic. And so we have, like Skull Flat Road has a portion of that that's failed and collapsed. You know, Pool Station Road was one road that washed out. We had some, it looked worse than it actually was. The repairs for that were pretty straightforward, even though the original reports was, the bridge was washed out, when in reality, it was just a little bit of pavement repair. And so this work's essentially done. With this though, and the way we did this in 2017, was that FEMA wouldn't let us reimburse category B until we were done with category A. And so we still have to wait for the debris removal before we can invoice for this. But as you see, the costs are pretty minimal. They're about $35,000, about $2,000 of a general fund related to that. Now, what Supervisor Mills alluded to is our next step, and this is where we're currently at. And this is the debris removal process. And a little bit to my frustration as well, we have two projects that have been executed, contracts executed both with contractors and with construction management firms. One's with Independence Road, which is our single biggest cleanup site, at an amount of about $290,000. We also have a countywide site executed project, and that's for sites that don't require additional permanent restoration. That's the debris removal's done, and we're done with the project. And so that's been approved, it's a large number of various sites that's been approved. We have the construction management, we have the construction, we have those costs. We have two other projects that are lagging a little bit. One is for various sites that will have permanent restoration. And so that's about $133,000. And then Railroad Flat at Highway 26, there's a slide there, that slide needs to get cleaned up. That works about $134,000 based on estimates. Now, the good news on this, and we'll talk about the delays here, is FEMA has authorized the debris work to begin on an administrative level. They've approved the project. The bad news is the number they gave us was way lower than what we need. They authorized $118,000, $119,000. Looking at that number, their quantities were right, they're on, but their cost per cubic yard were way low, just not even close to the realm of reasonable. And so we've reached out to CalOES and FEMA to get direction on next steps. There's two possible paths here. Either FEMA's going to tell us, like they've done with other projects, we'll go ahead and continue, don't worry about going over the $118,000, as long as you have your invoices and your costs, we'll reimburse you down the road. We don't like that as public works professionals or the CAOs, because there's, you know, what happens if they come back and say something? Now, in the past, they have done that. They've, there's, there's a track record of them. If we go out and spend a million and it's 120, they will reimburse us for that, but we just like to see it on paper, right? We want the commitment. So we are reaching out to FEMA, asking if they would consider amending that number to the fact that we actually have two executed contracts with actual prices. And so we're asking them to use those to amend their amendment. We don't have a response back. We got this information a few weeks ago. And so we're still coordinating with them. So this is not the critical path item though. So we still have time to resolve this. The critical path item is the environmental review. Despite the fact that these are likely categorical exclusions, pretty straightforward, we don't have the paperwork from FEMA, and FEMA has, on this particular, on these particular projects, expressly said that we cannot begin work until the environmental review is complete. And so again, it's the frustrating part on me, you know, we do that environmental in about three hours, two to three hours, in our staff time, we can do it in a day easily. It's been months since we've been waiting. And so what we've done is we have winterized the sites. Independence is a good example. We thought we would be in there in the fall. That didn't occur, and so I sent my road crews in to the road team in to go do the temporary triage. We had some debris that was in ditch lines that potentially could cause flooding. We've done all that. So it's just more unsightly messes on the side of the road. But at this point, we think they're not a danger to the public. So the next steps, we have those two other, oh, go ahead.
Before we go there, because one of the things that's been happening is the amount of debris along the edges of Parrot's Ferry and Oburn's Ferry Road. I have physically witnessed, because of the excess debris that's along the edge of the road, it allows further sliding to then bounce into the road, and I have personally witnessed rock slides which now contacted vehicles, caused flat tires, that kind of thing. So getting some of that debris off the edge of the road will help to keep it and contain it on the edge of the road rather than letting it bounce into the road. And that's been one of my problems, especially on Oburn's and Parrot's, closer to the bridge.
Yeah. And looking at those projects, the Parrot's Ferry and Oburn's Ferry, I believe are under the countywide site, so it's the executed contract. We're just waiting for FEMA. And so my road crews have been going out and looking at these sites when every storm hits. One of the concerns, and I can't speak for each individual site, but sometimes the concern is, is when you remove debris, it opens up an area for more debris to come down, because you're losing that, that, that pressure, that ability with, like a, kind of like a dam. And so, and I'm not saying each site's that case, there might be some we could go out and do a little bit of work, but there's a concern there that when you remove that, it gives more room to come down, and then higher volume of material that could have further impacts. And so one thing I recommend, if you do have individual, individual sites that you're concerned with, reach out to me directly, we can work offline. And like I said, if there's, and it was in my next slide, but I'll bring it up now, there's no way that I'm going to jeopardize public safety for a federal grant. That's not going to happen. We have made, we've looked, we've put eyes on these, each of these, we intend that, believe that the risk is not great, but if you think that we've, or your public thinks that we've, maybe it's changed, or we need another look, let us know. And we're happy to take a look. And like I said, we've done it on Railroad Flat, we've done it on Independence, we've added a couple of sites already, that despite the fact that we felt that they were okay, we've done additional work to ensure, you know, additional safety during the winter.
Okay, I'm not going to take board time, I'll, I'll talk to you about it offline, but it's a, it's a common problem with hillside stabilization and regards to the, what's falling into the roadways. Twalungie County has the same issue on Parrot's Ferry on their side, so.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay. Okay, so the next couple of steps here, as I mentioned, we have the two contracts we have to go out and procure. Those have not come to the board for approval for procurement yet, but we plan to do that in the upcoming weeks and months. Then assuming we get the approvals from FEMA at some point, we'll begin the debris removal process. At this point, we're probably looking more like like winter or spring, but as soon as we have those in hand, we'll, we'll begin. And again, I want to highlight the fact that we are committed to safety, and no way will I jeopardize road safety for the pursuit of a grant. So like I said, the efforts on Independence, the efforts on Railroad Flat, we've done work to ensure public safety, and if we spend local road funds, that's fine with me. Safety is first, second, third, fifth priority beyond trying to get a couple of extra dollars out of federal grants. The last, oh, I'm sorry.
You have a question, though, what brings up what Dennis was speaking about. So we've identified these sites, we've applied to FEMA. What happens between now and then if we have some more damage, extensive damage to the areas we've already identified? Will that delay it even further, because we have to now go back and, and re-identify the project, the costs and so forth?
Yeah, that's a good question. So if some of, most of the work, as long as it's in scale, so if, let's say we have a slide, and then a storm comes and an additional material comes down, that's within the scope of the original project. And these projects are generally vague in nature that allow you to increase quantity. So let's say we have 700 cubic yards of equipment that has to remove, and then this winter, another 50 cubic yards or 100 cubic yards comes down, that's included in our scope. If we did have, let's say, a subsequent, something happened that, let's say, different damage happened as a result of that, that may require a scope change or a new project, and that's on a case by case basis. Usually what happens though, in these sort of delays, is things will increase a little bit, but they don't change, that there'll be a little bit more debris removal, there'll be maybe a little bit greater area of asphalt's kind of broken up than there was previously. And with, it comes to quantities, FEMA doesn't require a scope change when it comes to quantity. So usually, we're covered underneath that. So the last, one of my last slides here before we open it up is, we've been working with FEMA and CalOES, we've visited these sites, prepared multiple project estimates. On the permanent repairs, we have done a couple of smaller repairs on Worden Road and Whiskey Slide, and I didn't mention this previously, but most of the damage, not all of it, but a lion's share of the damage happened in District 2 and happened in areas affected by the Butte Fire. Parrot's Ferry, Oburn's Ferry, Pool Station, there's other sites that have been affected. I think Algeers has had some damage. But in reality, the Butte Fire was the, was, the roads in the Butte Fire area were the areas that were most affected by the 2019 storm. So a disproportionate amount was in District 2. Worden and Whiskey Slide are in District 2, those repairs have been done, those were pretty minor, we were able to do the permanent repairs at the same time that we're out there doing the other triage work. Now, the remaining projects, this is where they branch off into their own processes. So the projects on Independence, Railroad Flat, and Pool Station go under an FHWA track through the Federal Highways Administration and Caltrans. Those have a separate authorization process. We're actually pretty familiar with that process, because it's very similar to our grant programs through bridges and road safety. So those are pretty standardized, we know those fairly well. And then the other side, Skull Flat, Calaveritas, those are local roads, those fall under FEMA. And so we have to do the, but with all of these, we have to do the debris removal, get a better assessment of what actually is there, because some of the debris's covering some of the damage, and then ultimately come up with revised cost estimates. And so again, these roads are all safe, you know, Skull Flat's a little questionable, but it is open to one lane of traffic. The rest are all open to the public and safe, but as a result, because of the permanent repairs and the fact that these other ones haven't happened, these are probably more 2021 projects. Railroad Flat is our biggest project, that slide that's off Highway 26 is, our estimates are somewhere at $2 million or more to repair that slide, it's pretty massive. And so that's probably more a 2022, 2023 project. The good thing about that one is there's no habitable homes above the hillslide, so there's minimal risks to the public, and there's a lot of right of way from the hillslide to the actual railroad flat roads. We have a lot of room to play with, and that's a very fortunate side with that particular project, is we have lots of room to, where debris can come down and we can collect it, we can clean it up. But ultimately, that slide does have to get stabilized, so we'll be working over the next couple of years to do that.
A quick, quick question from Supervisor Coway. In D2, how do these FEMA-funded roads dovetail, or roads repair dovetail with the PG&E funding of the roads?
Yeah, that's a good question. And, and, and the repairs, and so like, for example, I think portions of Worden Road and Whiskey Slide are in the Butte Fire road repair money. So we've done that through, the roads have already been repaired. And so those aren't really long sections, those aren't a big part of the PG&E settlement money, and so we won't do those. Or we'll, there may be a little bit left with the PG&E settlement money that we use, but we won't have to use quite as much money from the PG&E settlement dollars for that, although the total amount's pretty small. The remaining projects, like Independence Road is one of our big projects, that's not in the Butte Fire Road Recovery Project. Railroad Flat and Highway 26, only paving is, that's a really small port. So there is a little bit of overlap, and in reality, there's not a huge overlap, minus the debris removal and the, the emergency protective measures, which that's getting that debris removal, that's separate from the PG&E, and we'd like to get, that debris removal will likely be done before the PG&E settlement work starts.
As a follow-up to that, you, you just said that some of this money won't necessarily be used from the PG&E funds. So when there's money left over on certain things, because we located specific amounts to each project, where does that money go back to?
Yeah, so in the original Butte Fire plan, the plan was to utilize, there's 13.45 million dollars. The plan was to utilize that money based on phases, and we prioritize roads based on collector roads, major, you know, major roads that serve, provide ingress and egress. And the idea was we were going to work towards either completing all the roads or exhausting the funds. And so what happens right there is that little bit of extra goes back into the kitty, but we continue to work with the direction from the board to continue to do these projects until one of those two things happens. So in reality, there's a slightly likely opportunity to have a little bit of funds in excess when we're completed with the work, and then the board can take direction on what to do with those excess funds, or that money could be reallocated to cost overages in projects, other projects affected by the work. So either one of those could occur, and like I said, a cost estimate, the work, the cost estimates were, are what they are, they're our best estimate, and so we won't know the actual cost until we begin work. Okay. So in total, I think I've talked most about all these. So in summary, the one thing that this board has done that I think, you know, we caught just in time, is that the, the cash flow between delivering the projects and then when reimbursement can occur, and we recognize that, you know, there were, whether it was teeter or general fund contingency, might not be the best use of those funds, and so we're, the board directed us to utilize road impact mitigation fees. And so as Murphy's Drives, well, Murphy's Drive's a little different, but the, I think the board approved teeter, if memory serves, but the remaining funds, as we deliver these projects, we'll be paying for those out of RIM, and then backfilling the rim when we get reimbursement to make sure we keep both contingency and teeter funds whole. With that said, and again, before I close this out, I want to highlight the importance that we recognize in aggressively pursuing state and federal reimbursement. You know, this is, these monies, every dollar that we can get in reimbursement can be reinvested back into core services that are very much needed. You have a team between us, the Auditor Controller, and Administration and OES, who are fully committed to that path. To that end, we continue to work with our CalOES representatives and our Caltrans representatives. And one thing I'm, I'm heartened with this time around is, I think in prior iterations, we siloed these operations a little bit, and so when individuals left or problems happened in the silos, this, there may have caused some issues. In this case, we have three separate departments, all keeping tabs and working collaboratively. So, you know, if one person leaves or if something changes, we have other people involved in the process to make sure this continues, to make sure there's not a loss of information, to make sure that we're following all the steps necessary to close this out and maximize our opportunities for reimbursement. And so with that said, I appreciate your patience. I've taken quite a bit of your time, and with that said, I, if you have any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Go ahead, Mr. Gerlin.
Thank you. Josh, thank you very much for the presentation. As, as my fellow board members see, there's a lot of activity going on, especially in my district, and it's easy to get lost in all of them, and I appreciate you bringing everybody up to speed, but particularly want to thank you for keeping me up to speed on these. The community scoping projects that you've held in the community and your flexibility adjustment, I think is greatly appreciated. I also think people really appreciate the fact that we're making long-term investments in the county, your equipment purchases, which will benefit everybody. You know, you've got some equipment up there that's, you know, I'm not a young buck, and these, some of that gear's a lot older than I am. So it's nice to see it changing it out and helping everybody long-term, so thank you very much for the presentation.
Sir, thank, thank you for bringing up the RIM fees and how we're procuring this. This was the debate during our budget last September. Where, where's it coming from, teeter, and so on? I have a question, because you, earlier you talked about closing out projects and, and enrolling them. What is your role in the work done up to project completion when it comes to closing out these disaster projects? Are, are your roles clear?
Excuse me, Supervisor Stopper, give me one second. Sorry. So we, the role right now and the current structure that we've all agreed upon is that Public Works knows these projects the best. We've been dealing with these, with the winter disasters, they have been kind of bouncing around a little bit, and our intent is that these are currently housed, the Public Works projects are currently housed in Public Works. With that said, every email correspondence with CalOES, every correspondence with FEMA, admin and OES are being involved with that, so they're familiar and aware. And the process we're currently working on is, as these move forward, as they get to closure, we bring in OES and admin, and OES and admin, along with the Auditor Controller, help assist, who assists, oversees the closeout project, so that we don't have, you know, different departments dealing with the same OES. We felt that there was value in having one point of contact and collaborating during the closeout process with OES, but at the same time, the project management can be housed in-house, and we can do the day-to-day things. So trying to keep the strengths, the strengths within each representative department. We're, we're strong in delivering projects, the coordination and collaboration between CalOES and our local OES is strong. Let's rely on that for the closing.
We, I appreciate that, because I had made a suggestion, and the boards had supported it when we did it, we had given extra money for closing out such projects, we had pulled it from the PG&E settlement funds and gave that to OES to facilitate this process. So I just want to be clear that, you know, everything's going through the proper channels, and then we're successfully closing these out and making the process, we're, we're streamlining the process and making it better as we're moving forward. I want everyone's roles to be clear on that.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, to a certain extent, I think that the idea is keeping strengths where the strengths lie. You know, OES is not a project delivery per se. That's no offense to them. They have really valuable skill sets in other areas. We, that's our job. We deliver Public Works projects. So let's keep the strength where the strength lies in Public Works. In the last year or two, we've made some good inroads in delivering much-needed projects. Let's continue that momentum. And then rely on OES, the strength that they have is the partnerships with the state and the federal partners. Let's rely on that for the closeout. So the relationship reflects that. Doesn't mean that there's different ways to do it that aren't equally as valuable, but I think in this case, we're taking advantage of our strengths appropriately.
I appreciate it, and you are doing excellent work in delivering these projects. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any other supervisors have any comments or questions? Public comment?
My name is Deborah Grimes, Calaveras Band and Mewoc Indians Tribal Cultural Resource Specialist. I want to thank you for all the information you provided. That gives the tribe, me and my department, a much clearer understanding where all these projects are through FEMA, CalOES, et cetera, and federal highways. As you folks know, we work closely under the environmental part of it, and we want to continue our wonderful working relationship with our county representatives, officials, things like this. So this being presented is going to help our tribe, me and my department, consulting with FEMA, things in that manner, exactly where things are. So that way Joshua don't have to hear from me today, tomorrow, because, or Jack, or anybody else. This way it gives us a better understanding. We really greatly appreciate it, and thank you all for all your hard work, and all of us as a team, and working in our community together. For our native sites, for historical, for the roads, for our citizens, safety, safety is very important to us, and we thank all of you for that.
Further public comment? With that, I'll bring it back to the board. This is purely informational item. Madam Clerk.
So I would ask, while I'm here, we have dialed back the, if you recall, when I first came here, these were monthly. The board directed us to bring them back at less frequent intervals. I think it's been about four or five months since the last time we did a presentation. Does that feel like an appropriate timeline to the board? Do you want more frequent updates? I mean, we have a number of projects that'll likely start construction this summer. It seems like, based on that, that maybe, you know, a four or five month may be an appropriate timeframe, but I'm certainly open to whatever the board may feel for if you want it more frequently or less frequently.
Board, any comments?
I'm fine with, yeah, the timeframe we're working on.
Great. I'm fine as well. I mean, you keep me pretty well up to date, so.
Okay.
Yeah, individually, when we come to you and talk to you, we're pretty much in our districts up to date on what's going on, so.
Yeah, and I'm happy offline, you know, anytime you have a question about projects in your district, obviously you can reach out to me anytime, and I'm happy to give you updates.
I want to comment that I do appreciate your updates that you send. They're very thorough, and let us see the big picture, so thank you.
I'll continue to do it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 19 is from OES. To receive a presentation regarding the disaster data report closeout update.
Can we do a five-minute break? You can't miss any part of it, Maria. Okay. All right. We'll proceed. Item 19, Madam Clerk. Oh, I apologize. Please proceed.
All right, Al's done. We can start.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I'm John Osborne, your Office of Emergency Services Director. I have a presentation for you this morning regarding the disaster recovery data report update. So without further ado, we're going to cover some definitions and... Some definitions that'll be helpful through the, through my presentation today. We'll, I'll show you a flow chart that addresses kind of the work that we do, and then we'll dive into the, each disasters. We'll have a summary, and then we'll move to questions. So just a couple of things. It's, I apologize upfront. I will use terms, and so I tried to define them that I'm most likely to use. Data report, or DRs, as it's commonly referred to, is the Federal Disaster Declaration Number. So for example, the Butte Fire is 4240. So if you hear me use those interchangeably, ask me which one I'm talking about. Project workbook or PW, those are the individual projects that you guys actually heard updates on from Director Pack today. And that's just how they are tracked within the Federal Disaster Declaration. And those project workbooks fall into one of two categories, either a small project or a large project. For each data reporter, federal disaster, there is a dollar amount threshold for a small project, so they have to be under X number of dollars. And then anything above that is considered a large project. Of course, everybody's familiar with the Bureau of Land Management, and most people are familiar with the TMP or the Tree Mortality Project. So this is a chart that depicts what happens through the project workflow. You heard Director Pack give a very informative update about his work over here in the project side. We actually do deliver projects in OES. We currently are operating the Tree Mortality Program. And so that is our only project where we have stuff out in the field. Other than that, upon when, for the most part, when Public Works completes a project, they prepare the financial documents and enter them into our, into our accounting system. We involve the Auditor Controller's Office, who has been instrumental in helping us wade our way through line by line, these invoices and contracts and stuff, making sure that they're up to snuff and that we can claim them. Once those two things happen, is where OES takes the lead. And the first thing that we do is we decide whether or not it's a large project or a small project. If it is a small project, we prepare the project for closeout, and then the difference between, as far as FEMA is concerned, for small versus large, is all of the small projects in a particular data report have to be closed at once. So what that means is, say there's five projects in disaster A, and three of them are small projects. We can finish one and two. We cannot send that to FEMA until we finish the third small project. And then we send them as a batch of three. Large projects are closed individually. So once that is complete, we go right to closeout. We submit it to CalOES, who in turn submits it to FEMA. So that's kind of our piece of the pie when it comes to, like Director Pack spoke of, you know, they're, they're road builders, and so we leverage our relationships with FEMA and OES to achieve closeout and the communication between emergency services there. So the first disaster that I'll talk to you about is Tree Mortality. This event, Governor Brown proclaimed a state of emergency in 2015, October 30th. And you'll notice that this does not have a DR number, but a CDAA number. What that means is that it is the California Disaster Aid Program, and it is not federally funded. This is through state funds only. So we've been operating this program since 2016 or so. Recently, we received a Bureau of Land Management grant for $88,000. That's going to allow us to complete two BLM land projects known as Project 9 and 22. They are both, well, one started, and Project 22, we are awaiting the cultural survey report from Far Western Archaeological Services. In addition to that funding, during the September 10th final budget hearing, you guys were kind enough to give us $300,000 from the PG&E Disaster Fund to complete six remaining projects in the Tree Mortality Project, or in the Tree Mortality Program. And Project 25 has been started. Project 26 is essentially weather-delayed till spring. That's in the upper country, and we're inhibited by snow. And Project 27 is slated to start this week on, incidentally, the 27th. These three projects are still in development. They've been programmed, and once we get trees marked and things like that, we'll put out an invitation to bid to continue those and finish up the Tree Mortality Project there. In the past, we've had a CalFire grant, a local assistance.
Where are these projects for the Tree Mortalities projects here that you just brought up? I mean, we hear numbers, but where are these?
So Project 9 and 22 are on BLM land, and they're kind of scattered throughout the county. BLM actually owns a bunch of little parcels here and there, and we split those into two different projects geographically, and so those are really scattered. Project 26 is up the 4 corridor. Let me get my, we actually have a project matrix for each of those, and I apologize. I should have thought about including that.
I have a question. Didn't we approve funding to do BLM land from the counties?
Yeah, yes.
So...
Did we approve funding to do the BLM land was her question?
So is the $88,000 outside of that are we paying?
How? The question was, do we pay, is $88,000 outside of what we paid? I believe so.
Yes, so the $88,000, let me jump back in here to my presentation. So the $88,000, we will use that money to pay for our 25% share. The CDAA funds that we receive pays for 75% of the program, and then 25% of the program is local monies. And we went to BLM, we asked them to assist us with those local monies, and they awarded us that $88,000.
Thank you.
And to answer your other question, Project 25 is actually a combination of older projects, 5, 7, so Arnold to Murphy's, Arnold and Murphy's. And what's happening, what we're finding with these is we have delayed returns of the right-of-entry forms, or we, as we are working through the projects, we find more trees that have died since our initial assessment. And so 25 is a cleanup project for three of those older projects that we completed in the first part of the program, the initial stages. Project 26 is Skyline Ranch, the county line, and that's pretty much above the snow line, so we don't want folks out there trying to fall trees when it's cold and wintery. Not only is it harder on the, on the ground, but it's a safety issue for our folks. Project 27 is again a cleanup project from West Point and the Willseville area. Project 28 is a Forest Service project on Forest Service ground. Project 29 is Highway 4 from BLS to Angels Camp. And Project 30 is in Big Trees Village. Looking slightly backwards, we were awarded a CalFire grant in 2018 to offset that 25% local match. They awarded us $679,196. We expended all of that money. They awarded that grant to 10 different counties, and we were one of five that actually, actually expended all of our funds. Governor Newsom has included the, essentially the leftover money into this year's budget, so we may see another award for LATM. We closed that grant last fall in September. And then as of late last week, we've submitted a total of $3.5 million in claims between CalOES, which operates the CDAA funding, the CalFire funding, and then the funding that you guys graciously gave us. That has resulted in the mitigation of over 7,400 trees. Now, those trees are strictly trees that were, that were dead or dying as a result of the drought and the ensuing bark beetle infestation. That does not include Butte Fire trees, which we'll, we'll get to here in a few moments. And we have scheduled for you guys and for the public, on February 11th, we will bring our project manager up and provide you with a specific update regarding the Tree Mortality Program. Moving right along to the Butte Fire, just some background data. September 15th, Governor Brown requested a presidential declaration for our county. This one is slightly different in that the governor added us to the Valley Fire Declaration. Those two fires were actually burning at the same time. On September 22nd, President Obama declared a major disaster, and that allowed us to have help with individual assistance as well as public assistance. It burned 70,000 acres. We lost two people. We lost more than 468 residences, 343 outbuildings, and sustained damage to 45 other structures. In the ensuing recovery, the disaster declaration was broken into seven public work, or project workbooks. We closed, we as a county, closed four of them out on March 26th, 2019, and we claimed $2.03 million to FEMA. I inquired with CalOES regarding that, those claims, and they have been recognized by FEMA but have not been sent back to CalOES yet. So that claim for that $2 million is with FEMA at this time.
Is that another project that is, like, you brought up small projects, contingent that all the small projects within a certain field get finished for closure? So are those being held up, contingent on other ones being not part of that final?
No, sir. Those were, those were all large projects.
Okay.
And this, this March 26th date, we actually revised this closeout. And to be honest, that was before my tenure. I was able to find that and find evidence that we had emailed that. I contacted CalOES, made sure that they had got it, and it had gone forward and verified. I contacted CAL OES, made sure that they had got it, and it had gone forward and verified that amount. That was for four projects, emergency protective measures, law enforcement. So, that was when we had the overtime and the costs associated with deploying law enforcement during the incident, and immediately after the incident. Emergency protective measures, non-law enforcement. So, that was the costs associated with, I mean, the fire that were not law enforcement related. We actually had a project for looking at whether or not we could place manufactured housing units or MHUs on the burned parcels, and the feasibility, it was a feasibility study and an environmental study to look at if that would be the most appropriate way to render some assistance. We closed that out, and then we actually had an in-kind donation project, and that's where we were contributing our regular funds, like our straight time, and to the efforts, and we were asking for a credit for that. Those four projects is what makes up this $2.03 million. Since you guys were kind enough to help OES out with some extra cash, we have been able to close one PW. That was the ASH insurance, better known as PW 99, and we sent, we claimed $344,000 and some change to FEMA on January 23rd. At this time, we do have two large projects that remain open. You guys are both, all very familiar with them. It's the Hazard Tree project and the Rhodes project. Phase one of the Hazard Tree project is completed, and as of late last week, FEMA has approved our phase or version two portion of the Hazard Tree project, and it's been sent back to CAL OES. CAL OES is in their final review, and then they will send that to us so that we can get going with that, hopefully this spring, since it's January. The Rhodes project is the other one. Director PAC covered that pretty adequately for you guys. Phase one has been completed, and phase two was delayed by the Hazard Tree project. Our reasoning behind that is it would be silly to go up there and send trucks with logging equipment and haul logs out over brand-new roads and tear up our brand-new roads. So, our intent there was to finish off phase two of the Rhodes after we had done the tree removal. Tree removal got hung up for the last 16 or 18 months in federal review. And so, CAL OES came to us and said, well, why don't you guys think about the alternative project that Director PAC described, the equipment replacement? They actually provided us with a sample of how to go about writing that to them and applying for that. Josh's team is in the process of completing that and sending it forward. And what'll happen during that is, they'll purchase equipment. FEMA will have FEMA oversight of the procurement process, but once we procure that, that equipment, we'll be able to close out PW 88.
John, before you move on.
Yes, sir.
If we've closed a project out in March of 2019, and it's still in somewhat of a federal review, what kind of timeline are we looking at for an actual reimbursement from them? And should we be also thinking about that in terms of how we fund or rebudget in our future years, so that we can account for this extended period of time where we've expended the funds, but we just-
Good question. And I wish I had a better answer than I have. Right now, the process is running anywhere between six and nine months at a minimum. We are quickly approaching that 12-month minimum, and so we're kind of on the backside of that first, that $2 million, and I expect to see that in, hopefully, maybe the next few months. And that kind of dovetails into a slide later, or a discussion that I have for us later in the, in the presentation regarding what our next steps are. As far as planning, you know, we, the board did remove all of this revenue at the September, or almost all of the revenue at the September budget hearing. We put, you guys put back $105,000 into this year's budget. So, what we need to do, what my shop needs to do at this point is, we will, as we start seeing this money come in, we will start looking at those individual projects that we get reimbursed for and figuring out how we paid for it. Did we use REM money? Did we use general fund money? And making those special funds where we, where we need to pay that money back, making sure they're whole. And then, my shop owes the PG&E disaster fund a little chunk of change for tree mortality, so we have to repay that, and start backfilling those specialty funds.
And that was- Mr. CAO, would you like to add anything to that?
John covered most of the points I would have touched on, but just as a practice moving forward, part of, one of the rationale as to why we pulled that revenue out of the budget was not only because we weren't completing projects at a clip that was appropriate, but because there was an extended time on the payment and the potential of disallowance. Now, though, that we're completing these projects at the rate that we are, when we submit a, when we submit for reimbursement, if we haven't gotten it in the current year, then we'll plan for it in the next fiscal year. So, we'll be able to start seeing that coming in as projected revenue. If we have evidence that we've submitted, then we have good reason to believe that within the next fiscal year, we will receive.
Sorry, Mr. Mills.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted it to be part of the conversation so that we have a clear understanding going into the budget process, how this will impact us in out years, and also to understand, should we have another declared disaster or any other future work, that we have a clear understanding of where this will fit within our budget process and our reimbursement process. So, we, we already understand it. I think we're in kind of uncharted territory with our understanding of how this all works, but at the same time, it's a lesson learned, opportunity kind of thing. So, the more we understand it, the better we understand it, and the timelines involved in it, I think, will help us for better clarity as we go through the rest of these projects.
Sir, I wholeheartedly agree. And one of the things that we're finding as we're moving from the older disasters to the newer disasters is, we are seeing that learning curve and seeing that we are doing a better job of, we as a county team as a whole, of tracking these expenses and documenting our work, which makes our work in closeout much easier, simpler, and streamlines that process upstream through CAL OES and FEMA. So, hopefully, that will result in some shorter timelines, because they look at it, they know that it's squared away, they're able to quickly follow the trail of invoices and approve it faster.
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to reemphasize, you know, that's $5.8 million of accounts receivable for bills that we've already paid. So, that's with the full faith and credit of the US government backing this up, we're assuming, so that's pretty good. Plus, we put aside almost $1 million for contingencies for future disaster funds, which obviously will pay back, and that, as you were discussing earlier. But I think that the fact that we're asking for this money and billing is a really good thing, and wrapping these up in, you know, on my balance sheet of 5.8 accounts receivable is pretty good. Thank you.
So, moving on to the first 2017 winter storms. This particular storm was actually nine days long, and what the board did is, by the time that we got through this, we actually suffered another storm in February, and so we took two separate disasters and declared them together at the county level. So, when you hear like Director PAC speak of the winter storms, it's a combination of two separate disasters. And they did the same thing, heavy rains, snow, high winds, mud, debris slides. This particular one, which was the January storm, resulted in 10 public project workbooks being created. We closed out six of the small ones, January 2nd, for a claim of $172,410 and some change to FEMA. There are four remaining projects that are large that are in progress. You heard the update from Director PAC on those particular projects, and they're slated to be completed during the calendar year 2020. On this particular data report, not that it, kind of just a fact, the amount between large and small was $123,500. So, anything, $123,549 was small, and anything larger was considered large. We actually had a second, or a third winter storm, and we actually had no eligible damage in that storm, so we have no claims in it. That joins in with kind of the pattern that we had. We made five proclamations, four of them were granted as presidential disasters. The second winter storm that we actually had claimable damage was in February, and again, heavy rain, snow, wind. This particular one resulted in 10 PWs or project workbooks. Seven of them were smalls and are ready to be closed out. With those seven projects, the claim stands at $197,517. And again, remember that these are small projects, so we have to wait till they're all done. Well, there's one small project that is left, and it is the small project, it is the temporary repairs for a large project. So, those temporary repairs have to stay open. That's how we pay for the temporary repairs until we start the permanent repairs. Once we start the permanent repairs, we'll be able to close that small one out and add it to these other seven, and send all eight to FEMA at once. Last time I checked recently, last week, on that small project that is still open, it's around $70,000. So, we will submit eight project workbooks for, give or take, $265,000 and change there. And again, we're in lockstep with Public Works as they're finishing these projects, especially now that the backlog of closing some of these older projects are, we're over that, and now we're to the point where we have gathered together what needs to be closed, like in the small projects, and where we are in the current large projects. We're in lockstep with, with Public Works and the Auditor's Office in doing a better job of tracking these projects. We're involved earlier now, so the closeout procedure will be more streamlined, and hopefully that will pay us, again, benefits along that timeline and shorten the actual reimbursement Onto the 2019 winter storms. Again, the project side was covered by Director PAC. This was February of 19, so just a couple of weeks, it'll be a year, and it resulted in five project workbooks. Two of them have been completed by Public Works at this time. There's, again, that one outstanding one that prevent us from closing those out. Once the small gets done, we'll package up those three and make a claim to FEMA, and that will leave the one large to be taken care of once we get those completed. And you see the slight variation on this particular disaster, the large project threshold was $128,900. Maybe that's just some data to, each one of them is different, and not having the same level benchmark kind of makes it more complicated, because you can't put one number in your head and think, okay, this is small. It varies from each one of these. So, in summary, since we last spoke about these, which was at the December 10th final budget hearings, we've worked really hard with OES and the Auditor's Office. Combined, when we started this in September, we had 26 project workbooks open. We have closed seven. We are standing by to close seven more, and that leaves us about 12 projects that are scheduled delivery in the next, during this calendar year. And just to touch on the tree mortality project, we're down to eight different projects there, and there's our total claim amount. And again, our next steps from here, now that we have kind of our hands around where these disasters sit, what we're gonna, what our next step will be to do is, again, address those special funds that need to be repaid, and start, once we see that reimbursement money coming in, start putting those, that, the reimbursements back into those funds and making them whole. There will be an amount that comes back as essentially new revenue. We won't really know what that looks like until we get down really into the weeds and start looking at blades of grass and seeing where these invoices were paid out. And that's going to be, again, a lengthy process to go through, and then hopefully, by the time that we get done with that, we'll have a very detailed and accurate accounting to make the special funds whole and bring back a number to the board, hopefully a really big one that says that we have this money that is, that can go to wherever you guys And then, again, to reiterate Director PAC's commitment as a team, I've met with him, my staff has been meeting regularly with his staff and getting updates about rates and invoices and creating the documentation to send it off to FEMA. And so, that actually brings us to the people that were deeply involved in this. CAO Al has been overseeing this, and Ride and Hurd. Out at Viv's office, Tony has been a great resource. Cameron Bardwell is our new emergency services coordinator, and she has been integral in this in helping us navigate and improve our relationship with CAL OES, even though she's only in our, about our third week. Julie Ames is the department analyst that we hired on a temporary basis, based on the $50,000 that you guys gave us to get some extra help. She has been, she touches these each and every day. Josh PAC has been great to us in making sure that his folks get us what we need to do to close out. Mark and Kelly have been the, kind of the holders of the Public Works information, so when we didn't understand what a term meant or what an invoice was, we went to those folks, as well as Jacob Lyle from Public Works, and they were able to set us straight and kind of educate us about all things Public Works. We couldn't have gotten through this without Kathy Gomes and Blake Atherton. They have been the folks that have been primary in our, in our Auditor Controller's Office in auditing these invoices and making sure that we had the documentation that they felt was necessary to be successful in making those claims. And then, a big shout-out to our project management team for the, for the tree mortality project. They have done a fabulous job of operating that program for us and being there for us when we applied for grants and when we billed for grants and things like that. And you'll get to see them soon on February 11th. But it kind of shows you that, the team members in this slide, from a very diverse set of departments that came together to get, to really work and get these headed in the right direction, get the herd headed towards home. That's us. If you haven't- If you haven't registered for Calaveras Alert, please do so. That's my contact information, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Garimindi?
I'd just like to compliment you. You took a very chaotic pile of paper and sorted it into manageable boxes, moving things forward. That was not easy. I think it's gonna, it's gonna benefit us greatly in the future. The next disaster, we now have systems in place, and there will be other disasters. So I appreciate that, especially pursuing the money. Thank you.
You're welcome. Supervisor Mills?
Yes, John, going back to tree mortality and the excess funds that are out there that they're probably going to put into this year's budget, do you feel that the LATM, that the future awards are going to be based on performance, or that to some degree that they know that we've been a deliverable forum, so therefore, as we come forward with another...
That is my hope. And what we have found in the two, almost three years that we've been operating this grant is our foresters, as they have been traveling throughout the county, are seeing the bark beetles move to, move up in elevation, and that trees that were healthy when we came through in 2016 and 17 are now dead or dying. So this problem isn't going to go away. And the upstream hazards that we face are fuel loading in our forests. We are a heavily forested county, that's no new news to you guys, but the more dead fuel that we have in our forests, the greater likelihood we will experience another mega-fire. So we are focused on getting as many of those trees out as we can. We have and will continue to aggressively pursue grants to do fuel mitigation work like this. And I know that with our Cal Fire Partners here locally, we have an outstanding relationship with them. They are very aware of our tree mortality efforts and are ready to partner to continue that. So I hope that it is based on performance, because I think we did a pretty good job of spending the money.
And that was, that was my point, is that we were probably one of the few counties that was able to successfully go through the entire process.
They granted, yes, they granted ten counties' money, and we were one of five that expended all funds.
So, and then the other question has to do with, considering this list of all the PWs, would it be helpful for the Board to be able to see that list and kind of get some kind of an overview of the values, the, what it's, what you're in?
Yes, and one of the things that I actually had here in my notes, Director Pack covered them well. OES, E's versus public work E's, they tend to call it by a project name, Hava Road, and because we deal with the book side of it, we call it a PW. And we have those actually tied together, so I could happily make sure that the next go-around that we use more common language.
Thank you.
So.
Well, thank you, thank you for your work. You answered some of my questions as you worked forward, whether these came out of RIM, RIM, other restricted funds, teeter contingencies, or general fund, identifying that and making sure the money goes back to the correct place when we're, when we're finished closing these projects out and actually receiving the money. I'm going to ask you the same question as I asked Mr. Pack, because you both worked together. These are, have to do the same issues, but you've identified together. What is your role in the work done up to project, or after project completion, except for when it, when it comes to the tree mortality program, because you're, you're into that neck deep? And on all these disaster projects, and are all the roles clear working up to there?
Yes, sir, they are. So in the workflow chart here, the project work, whether it's done by OES or Public Works, Public Works does the bulk, the lion's share of the project work. When they enter that financial tracking from their system into the county system, when those financial documents get entered, we involve the Auditor Controller's Office. They're looking over those to make sure that the batches are correct and that the right invoices are in and the wrong invoices are out. Once that is completed, we become primarily involved and take the lead of the data report and are charged with closing them out. And from the OES portion down is our sole responsibility.
So do you feel, as we progress, that the departments are working together in a more streamlined process, and we're coming to a point where everyone's going to be closing these out in a more expedient fashion?
Anecdotally, absolutely. We are really starting to catch traction and hit stride with getting these done. Not only is my shop, thankfully, with the extra hire that we have, we are really getting our hands wrapped around what the process looks like for Public Works, so that we have an understanding of how to close that out. We are working almost on a daily basis with the Public Works staff to make sure that the documentation, if we can't find it, they help us find it. There are clear and open lines of communication between Julie and Kelly, who are kind of the primary, primary points for the closeouts. So I've, I've actually met with Josh in the last two weeks and made sure that we're, we were on the same page when it came to what we thought we were going to present. We shared our presentations. So I think that we're, from here forward, we're going to do nothing but get better at this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other further Board comments or questions? Mr. Segala?
Ellis Segala, Taxpayer Association. Excellent presentation. It's a very complex subject. Looking at the overall picture, it seems like some counties have expenses that relate to tragedies or emergencies. We're one of the counties because of our trees, topography, and weather. And it seems like we should be able to identify long-term what the likely annual expense is really happening in our county. We can look at the past, there might be a way to look at the future. The reason for doing this is that the consequences of what happens in our county, bottom line, are our responsibility, because we live here. Right now, we depend on the state and the federal government for money, which is paid for by taxpayers, not only ourselves, but taxpayers in areas that don't have these types of problems. The federal government is not completely responsible when it comes to money. A good example is the national debt. Some of you might be aware of that. I understand just about all the income taxes that are collected are just enough to pay for the interest on that national debt, and there's no effort to reduce it. It's almost like, it feels good right now, why worry about tomorrow? Well, we, that won't work for, for things that affect our local county. So we should bear in mind that at some point, it might be a year, two years, it could be longer, it could be five or six years, maybe even longer yet, the federal government will have to face the possibility of not being able to have money to spend. And, you know, as an example, just an increase in interest rates would be a disaster to that national debt. Sure, we can have, we could take the money, the more money that we have to pay for interest on the national debt, and then borrow that again, but that's a downward spiral. The winds-up republic in Germany had that experience. And so we don't need to, we need to not only be responsible with our own money, we have to plan for putting reserves aside. Oh, darn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Segala. Any further public comment? Ms. Cordo?
It's a huge amount of work. The trees and their mortality has, has created a huge problem. And part of the problem is, is not doing the kind of husbandry of the forest and the tree, trees. And good husbandry does not allow trees to grow too close together. When you start seeing that black stuff going up and down the trees, you know that they're too close together. And I have driven up the roads like Highway 26, and there's a lot of trees that are still way too close together. And on the other hand, I totally believe in trees. I believe that we should be proactive in planting trees, because they are what clear the air, they're what adds oxygen to the air. And we have got a huge problem. It's going to take the planting of trillions and trillions of trees in order to mitigate what we've been doing for centuries. And so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grimes?
Thank you for the presentation, John. It's very nice. We heard all of this, it's very important, like we share. So I won't get back into the detail of this project, because everyone's heard it and we understand about it, and it, and it is of great importance to all of us. I live in trees, most of us do. I'm very familiar how federal, state, federal highway monies go, the environmental part, 106 NEPA SEQA, Senate Bill 18 AB 52. What I will share here today is, as I shared previously, I've been doing this for decades. I'm here to work with everyone, represent my tribe, my ancestral places, even historical sites. We're not here to oppose anyone's project. But when we first started all this disaster and storm and things like this, we were really on the right track altogether and the departments. I'm not saying we're not in those right tracks that we can't, like, get back on, but I see your closeout fundings and things like this, and I think that's important to our county to get funding back and being reimbursed, and understanding that, you know, you guys pay so much money and you get reimbursed for it. That's wonderful, we need that, because we are not a rich community here, yet. But in the meantime, I would like to address that there is very much concerns into our native site areas. We've addressed, we've come together with Mr. Osborne, with Public Works, the new folks, you know, after Jeff Krebetsch was no longer there, we gave time to build that relationship up with Public Works. And reviewing all these projects that have gone through, they're very important, so important, we understand that. But also, we had splintering of human remains in some of these erosions. We've had sites that have been previously recorded. We have not been contacted even into the smaller areas of these projects. So therefore, I had to start outreach into FEMA and CalOES this week. I did some consultation with them last week. They were understanding that we had a really great open consultation process happening within Public Works and OES and New Department. I would like to continue that through these grants in our community, but also know that you guys are all sitting up there, you're doing your job, everyone's doing their job, well, I am too. And as to address our sites, we're Calaveras, we talk about the airplane coming in, how everyone likes Calaveras, it's historical, it's prehistoric, our people are still here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes. Mr. Moore?
I'm Will Moore from Valley Springs, and I'm hearing these, talk about all this grant money and fuel mitigation, and I'm thinking, this is a passing thought, but maybe we could get some grant money to build a chipper, an industrial-grade chipper that could chew up some of those beetle-infested trees and so forth. And I can remember working in the Bay Area where, for contractors, where we had to pay $300 per stump to dump stumps, and they, and no dumps in the Bay Area would take them. So, you know, maybe we could be grinding some stumps out here for 300 bucks a shot. Anyhow, it's a thought.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any further public comment?
My name is Gloria Grimes, and I am the tribal chairman for the Calaveras Band of Mewoc Indians. Excuse me, I'm just getting over a cold. I hadn't heard, Barry, no comment at all that you have involved any of my native people to go out and do some of these surveys that you're talking about. So I do wish that the Board would understand that this isn't happening, but I'd like to see it happen in the future. We've got to get this stopped. When they dig up your, your father or mother, you'll understand what it's like. These are old people, and we're just trying to protect them. And we have donated years of time and never asked for pay, but at least let us know when you guys are going to do this. Thank you.
Hi, Alice Montgomery, District 3. Thank you for your hard work. There is some, I think, misinformation about the trees, and I'm no expert on trees, that I know in our district, we've had a big problem with tree mortality, the bark beetles and other issues. And some people just, they love their trees, and that's a wonderful thing, but I think what people don't realize is there's a very simple rule of thumb. And for trees where people are living, the conifers, if there's 10 feet between canopy, not, not the tree trunks, canopy, that's all we can have. They don't realize that their love of trees also, if you have too many trees on your property, it increases drought, because those things are thirsty, and they really, really drink a lot. So what we've tried to do is educate people that if you just have 10 feet between canopy, you're good. So that's a very simplistic way to look at it, but I think that is not always distributed, that information. Thank you.
Any further public comment? With that, I'll bring it back to the Board. Any questions or... Supervisor Garimindi?
Yeah, I have no more questions, I just wanted to quickly respond. I know that we've talked with, with the Native American representatives about this, and we are going to be working to put together a more formal process. So, you know, we are all communicating, but sometimes it's important to make things in a more formal way.
Thank you, sir.
Just one quick thing.
Supervisor Mills?
And just to, to respond to public comments, so the public is aware, the county does have a tub grinder, it is portable. It does move around this county, taking care of the, the stuff that we have. And also that in forestry, when you can maintain a stand of trees, which is 130 trees per acre, six inches and better, you're probably in the right canopy number, so that everybody understands what that looks like. Okay?
With that, that's informational item. Thank you, Mr. Osborne.
Thank you.
We will be going back to item 16 instead of 20. Madam Clerk?
Item 16 is from the Community Development Block Grant to approve the selection of food bank services, senior transportation services, and housing rehabilitation for inclusion in a Community Development Block Grant application to the State Department of Housing and Community Development due March 2020.
Good morning, Terry Cox, Cox Consulting. So your Board...
So your board held a public hearing in December to initiate the process of selecting projects for the 2019-2020 CDBG or Community Development Block Grant program. Immediately after that, we issued a call for projects. Proposals were due at the beginning of January. They were reviewed the 8th of January by a staff committee. There were five proposals total submitted, one from the food bank operated by the Resource Connection for $300,000. Housing stabilization services were proposed by County HHS, combined with Community Action Agency and Sierra Hope for $290,120. Senior transportation operated by Common Ground requested $273,344. The Douglas Flat School renovation, there's a community group that proposed $300,000 to renovate that structure. And then the Calaveras Band of Miwok requested housing rehabilitation for the maximum, which as it turns out is up to $1 million. So the committee met, and the recommendation is that, which was just stated for the food bank and senior transportation as public services, the cap on this will be $500,000 to be split between the two, if that's your decision. In addition, the committee recommended that the county approve the application for the requested housing rehabilitation funds. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. The NOFA or the Notice of Funding Availability was just released. The training is actually tomorrow. The due date will be tax day, so the 15th of April. And I think that's all the information that we have so far, so.
Any questions from the supervisors? Public comment?
Last comment. I just want to approach the board and every, the community development, and thank everyone for hearing and understanding the need of that through rehabilitation for, for the native homes and stuff in our area. Thank you.
Elizabeth Thompson, Executive Director of Common Ground Senior Services, providing transportation in Calaveras. So I am also very grateful that the committee has recommending our senior transportation here in this county and providing services for the last six years here. The need has grown. We've been able to even through 5310 grants as well procure vehicles as well, and this would help us to reach the outer areas like West Point. There are many trips for Ada County. That is our biggest challenge here in this community, so, and for the low-income individuals and the disabled. So I'm really grateful for the opportunity to apply for this grant, and I thank you.
Any further public comment? Ms. Grimes.
I want to make a comment about the, the housing grant situation. Everybody thinks that because we're Native Americans, we're rich because we've got casinos. Well, we don't own a casino. We're not federally recognized yet, so we're kind of just hanging out there. And the casinos do not, you know, they can't help us in that aspect. I guess if we went down there and, I don't know, I don't think they would because they haven't helped the other ones. You know what I'm saying? It's not in their works to do that. If you, if you need food, I think they would help you a little bit like that and stuff, but they're not there to support us. We've got to, we've got to start working on our own business here. And right now, we're just, you know, applying for some housing because we have some young people that, it's not that they're all so poor they can't do these things, but see, when you live on Indian trust land, it's really hard to get, you can't go out and get a loan. You, you just can't do that, you know? So anyway, it's a, it's a long process to explain it all, but I just kind of wanted to put that out there to you folks so you would understand where we're kind of coming from. Maybe someday we have a casino, maybe we all get rich, maybe you guys will vote for us to have one. Who knows?
Thank you. Any further public comment? I'll bring it back to the board. Oh, any, any questions or comments from the board? Is there anything you would like to answer from public comment?
No, I was just going to mention that this application will be written by Adams Ashby. I believe you approved the amendment to their contract this morning, and it will come back before the board for a public hearing prior to submittal.
Would that all enter?
Not clear, are we? You're recommending the food bank for 300? Transportation? I mean, I wasn't...
Yeah, because the cap for public services combined is 500,000. The recommendation is just to split it between the two activities.
Okay. Plus, you were recommending housing rehab project?
Correct.
So that's three projects?
Yes. Technically, CDBG considers the two public services, one activity, but in effect, yes.
I just want to, and the, and the housing rehabilitation, that's a Native American allocation fund that we're going for.
If, it, it could be handled either way, and I will leave this to Lori Adams to determine what's the most competitive way to proceed.
Understood. Anything further? Would that all entertain a motion?
I would move we approve the committee's selections for the food bank, senior transportation, and housing rehabilitation.
Second? Motion by Supervisor Mills and a second by Supervisor Garimindi. Would that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five up.
Thank you.
Item 21, Facilities Ad-Hoc Report. Madam Clerk? Oh, is it that time already?
It's already been.
All right, we'll, we'll take a lunch to be back. What, what time?
1:30.
1:30. 1:30. Thank you. Welcome back to the Tuesday, January 28, 2020 meeting. Hope everyone enjoyed lunch. We will be moving on to the regular agenda, item 21.
Item 21 is from the Administrative Office to receive a report from the Facilities Ad-Hoc Committee.
Good afternoon, supervisors, member of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the ad hoc and our progress to date. As you're aware, just quick history for, for the public, as you are aware, the ad hoc was recreated, was created by action of the board on March 26, 2019. In that action, the board affirmed the goals or, or projects, specific projects that were discussed by the board on April 10, 2018. At the time the board took action, Supervisors Garimindi and Toffanelli were nominated to the ad hoc, and after that nomination, we've been meeting since April of 2019. My apologies, in the staff report, it says that we began meeting April 2020. So we began meeting approximately a year ago. We've been meeting monthly, almost monthly. There were a few months that, that we weren't able to. Initially, we were focused on the old jail demolition, and as you know, we've been able to bring this bid specifications for that demolition forward to the board. As we worked through that project, we've also been working in parallel to a certain extent on design of the new DA's office space. All of our projects have some sort of ADA component, which was a priority for the board at the ad hoc. As you know, we're also considering the HVAC feasibility study coming up. Not only have we discussed it, but we're bringing it forward to the Debt Advisory Committee. So essentially, we're to the point where the, the most important projects, we've, we've been able to dispatch some work on them. The discussion at this point is considering the prioritization that the ad hoc committee has made, that's documented here on the table on the staff report, and then also consideration for the potential of extending the ad hoc committee. The original action sunsetted the ad hoc either in June of 2020 or when the projects that were designated were complete. Obviously, they are not complete at this point in time, and the discussion of the ad hoc committee has been to consider the potential of extending the ad hoc and not only having oversight of the priorities that have already been identified, but consideration of adding additional priorities. Illustration of some of the priorities may be discussion of the museum roof, the animal shelter, which has come up in this venue many times, the potential of Health and Human Services building. And this isn't an all exhaustive list. This is just illustrative of some of the items that have been discussed at, at the ad hoc. And so with that staff report, I'll turn it over to the ad hoc committee members and let them add their positions on, on these items.
Well, I just, I'm sorry. Yes, we've been meeting actively. We did have a period of time of about three months, I think, because PSPS that we didn't meet because of ongoing things that were going on. But we did set timeframes for the jail demolition, and we've met those quotas, I think, as far as bringing it to the board, which was today, was on consent agenda, to move forward with an RFP and send that out. So we look to get started sometime in March with the demolition of that. We've also gone forward with at least giving some concept for the new DA's office that will go and be going in place there and getting it to a point where we can bring it to the board with some concepts and get their feelings on it and what they'd like to see in it and what we've, our conceptions are on the project itself, keeping in mind the amount of money that we'd have to construct it. That was part of what we had told Aspen Street to keep in mind. We didn't want to expand to a two-story building. We wanted to keep it somewhere in a range of 10,000 to 14,000 square feet. The other things we are working on, we did meet the last, our last meeting, last couple meetings, we did discuss HVAC and the replacement of that. And I think the CAAL, if you saw an email that went out about the Debt Advisory Committee having a meeting going over that, and I think he brought that up and discussed it, not, was it last meeting or the meeting before? I think it might have been the first meeting this year that we talked about it. I, I want to say though, I, I am in favor of adding the animal shelter building to this list, and also the roof on the museum. I don't know if you've been to the museum and seen the damage that they've had, not only last year, but the ongoing last five years, six years, it's really taken its toll on that building. Thanks to Patrick, we have a temporary roof on it for this year, but it was designated only as a temporary fix, and it was very cost-effective what he came up with and what they did. But it needs to be addressed. I think that building, just for the historic value of it, needs to be saved and not let it deteriorate to the point where it's going to cost a ton of money to go in and fix all of the, the insides of that building and the structure itself. A lot of the windows leak and a lot of the seals above the windows seek, and that's, all the headers on the windows may have some damage that needs to be repaired, and also the roof structure itself has some damage. And the dry rot, since it got wet, could be extensive, but I think it needs to be addressed simply because of the historic value of that building and the former courthouse that's there. Jack, you want to add to that?
Yeah, I agree with Gary. I think that this has been a, a good ad hoc. I think we're getting some things done. It's interesting from a fellow board, from a board member perspective, in that, you know, we have, everybody knows we've got a lot of deferred maintenance over the last 60 years here. So really trying to balance, what are life and safety? What are the things that immediately have to get done to maintain the buildings? As Gary said, museum is a, we have to maintain that or it's going to get more expensive. Things like HVAC, we fix them or there's going to be people without air conditioning this summer. Or heating. So, which is happening now. So these are things that we just cannot wait on, but we're also pairing that with, like as Gary said, working on planning, programming for the DA's office. We have to start programming, thinking about animal shelters, you know, the, the Health and Human Services building idea. Those are all things that take a long lead time to get programmed and put together, so we're trying to strike that balance between putting our, our thought resources into that long-term plan and trying to take care of the absolute immediate needs that we're facing. And, you know, it's going to be, it'd be nice when that jail goes down, it's bad juju out the door, and we can move forward on some other things. So I, I think it's been a positive, and I know Gary and I, and Alan, ready to answer any questions.
I think Bonnie may want to have a few words.
Good afternoon, Bonnie Rich Administration. I just wanted to let the board know the status of where we are at with the museum. I am currently preparing a contract with Pressy and Associates, who is a historical architectural firm, to help develop the plans for a new modern roof and help PM the project in order to preserve the historical structure of that facility. We will be utilizing the job order contracting process that is currently, it's already been published, your board has approved, so we anticipate being able to start that project this spring.
How are you paid for it?
Pardon me, we already have, we already have that project budgeted in capital improvements.
I would have a question. When was that direction given to budget for that item?
I apologize. Repeat that.
When, I, I, I'm, I'm all for working on the, the museum, but I would like to ask when that was budgeted?
It was budgeted during this current fiscal year budget.
Oh, okay, so the board had given direction to budget for that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but I, I got to say, at that time, when we budgeted the money, we have no idea what the cost would be and how much damage has been done to that building. So that money is for not the construction portion of it. It was to go forward with the planning and the drawings and the PM part of it. The full funding there, I'm sure, just looking at that building, what the costs are going to be, what's in there, I don't think is going to cover it.
So there's, there's two pieces, Mr. Supervisor Toffanelli, and Patrick can speak to the damage that we incurred during the 2019 winter storm. And my understanding is those costs will be covered by insurance. So Patrick is coordinating the work for the internal repairs, and we have budgeted $400,000 for the replacement of that roof.
Correct, but once we get the roof off, we don't know extensively what damage is there until that roof is completely off and we see what needs to be replaced. So that's why I questioned that amount of money, being able to fix that. It could go well over that, that you have to come back to the board to get their approval for the additional money.
We may very well need to do that, thus.
Thus, that's why I wanted to put it on the list, so we can get it.
I'd like to add one point on the museum roof, although it's not relative to the grander discussion. We do have an open FEMA claim as well. It's one of the winter storms' claims, so it'll help offset the insurance costs as well. It's not much money if we are able to receive it at all, but at the end of the day, I wanted to make sure you understand, we're trying to bring as many resources to bear on this particular project as possible.
The other, the other portion of this, though, also is, we may have insurance for the previous winter storm, but there was damage done, a lot of damage done. the previous winter storm, but there was damage done, a lot of damage done, a long time ago, over the course of the last six, seven, eight years, that we don't know yet what's there if we're going to fully go in and look at this, because some of the windows are boarded up, and there is some structures inside there as far as window headers and the framing inside and everything, that we're not sure exactly what's there. It'll cover the floor that got damaged in the courtroom area, and it'll cover the leak coming down the wall there, that portion of it, and maybe some of the roof in that corner over there. But it's not going to cover the damage over the years that's, that's within that building, so. And if, my opinion is if we're going to, and we had this conversation, if we're going to do this, we need to make sure that what we do is going to be more or less a permanent fix on a thing. We don't keep coming back, putting money into it, keep money into it, money into it, because now this is wrong, that's wrong, this, you know, and so we need to get an overall cost estimate of what it's going to cost to at least get it in a state that we know we're not going to have to deal with in the future.
Was there something further, Supervisor Calley?
What is the sheriff's storage mechanics?
That, that was a project that was originally discussed in 2018. I defer to Patrick to help understand what that was, if he recalls. We haven't gotten far enough along that I've pulled the covers back on that particular project yet. It's simply one that was documented in 2018 in the original Board discussion.
Yes, do we want to take these priorities in the order and discuss them individually? Or, you know, because we're throwing some additional items into this discussion that aren't in the priority list. So do we want to say, do we want to confirm again that priority number one is still priority number one and have a discussion about that?
The way this is agendized, I understand it to be a report. If we were to do this prioritization...
We'd have to re-agendize it.
I assume. How does that work, Madam Counsel?
I think that an informational item where you're just giving staff direction, I don't think that just determining priorities would require a separate action item.
So to that, if we look at priority number one, are we fully funded to be able to get that jail demoed on the ground?
Yes.
Based upon what we set in our budget the last year?
Well, I'll say yes with a caveat. We anticipate that it'll come in at below our bid level. We, Bonnie, budgeted in excess of what we anticipated, unless there's some unknown, some issue that we're not aware of that increases the cost. But what we know to date, we have enough budgeted to cover the demolition.
And we feel that this is something we are going to be able to get done before the end of this fiscal year?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Okay, on the, on the DA's office space, has there been any discussion with the District Attorney and any input given from her or her staff as to what this would look like?
She and her staff originally provided some requirements, and the original space study that was done by the previous CAO, we used that, that data to begin with. She's been invited, along with staff, to the next Ad hoc Committee, I think it's next week.
Thursday.
This Thursday?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
And both, I think Bonnie and Patrick, I know Bonnie for certain has scheduled a meeting with staff as a follow-up to the discussion in the Ad hoc to continue developing the program, for lack of a better term, or at least the high-level guidelines for the design.
So we're going to be able to fully fund, this is only a portion of the overall costs for this fiscal year. Have we clearly understood where we're going to receive the funds, what reserve accounts we're going to be taking the money to actually build this physical building, or are we going to be creating another? Is this something maybe the Debt Advisory Committee needs to discuss?
Well, the Debt Advisory Committee is another kettle of fish, I'll set aside for a moment, but no, we haven't made a determination of how this project or some of the others would be funded.
Okay. Has the space plan been taken into account with any of this?
I'm sorry?
We, we completed a space plan last year, I think it might have been before you got here.
Yeah, the Ad hoc Committee has reviewed the space plan. Frankly, in terms of the design of the new DA's building, it isn't that informative. Although the DA's staff had input on it, the document doesn't really go that in-depth into what the requirements would be for the building. So in addition to the space plan that's already been done, that's the purpose for the discussion with the DA and her staff to, you know, further refine what the building would be designed to hold.
Would the space plan be helpful with the HVAC replacement and understanding where we may be replacing equipment, where there won't be anybody in that building, or that it's not as critical in the longer term to be citing a replacement unit there?
The, the HVAC feasibility study took into, takes into account primarily the units that are outdated already. They also include the units that are running on R22, which, as you know, is a banned substance, and does take into account any other sort of replacement option that we could consider, whether it would be potentially demolished building. For example, we're certainly not putting a new HVAC unit in the jail, as an example. However, we aren't fully locked into a space plan far enough where we could, for example, anticipate not putting HVAC units in animal services. The smaller units, like the trailers, that have residential type of HVAC units, are not included in the feasibility study. So they're all commercial-sized units that are on pretty, pretty significant public structures, libraries, the animal shelter, the IT infrastructure room where our servers are kept. Those are the kinds of things that we prioritized first in the HVAC feasibility study.
I'm almost thinking, and just a suggestion for the Debt Advisory Committee to discuss a fleet concept here, where we're not dropping literally an entire bank of equipment into the system, and then 20 or 30 years from now, the government is forced, in essence, to replace an entire bank of systems again. That in a fleet program, you're always looking for replacing over, you know, so many units over a certain period of time, and it's a constant, ongoing effort, would probably be more cost-effective in terms of the debt than it would be to just drop them all into our system at one time. But I would like the Debt Committee to be thinking about those options of a single bulk purchase versus a staged purchase.
I, I respect that opinion and would agree with you under most circumstances. If we were talking about a fleet, for example, the Sheriff's Fleet, if they had somewhere around 56 units that were in excess of what would be appropriate for a patrol car, we probably wouldn't be able to phase them in two or three or four a year. And so it's a pretty equivalent parallel to, to look at the HVAC units that we have. For one, operating off controlled substance, which we can't even replace in those units, for one. For two, we've got units that are 40-plus years old on a 20-year life expectancy, so they really are patrol vehicles, lack of a better term, patrol vehicles that have several hundred thousand miles on them and aren't appropriate for their current level of use. And it's certainly the priority of the Board to consider how they go about these projects. My concern in the short run for the budget will be in this particular project. We don't have the financial capacity to turn over 10 units in one year. If, if we do that, that's going to be a budget buster for us. We've only in this current year got $400,000 budgeted for HVAC units, and, and we don't have a lot, a lot more capacity to move to $800,000 or a million in the coming years. So I do appreciate it's not ideal to, to drop 56 new units into our system. However, had we been conscious about it over the course of the years to this point in time, we wouldn't be in the position to have to do that.
And just the other two things to just be sure that, you know, I get my comments in here, is that the animal shelter has been a longstanding problem. And that, you know, Board after Board has simply provided a response to the grand jury, but really never taken a proactive step. And I think that we're, we're at a stage where we need to take a proactive step and show some good faith effort in trying to correct that longstanding problem. So where it lands on this priority list, you know, we're going to be putting ourselves in debt, one way or the other, here. And to what level, we're willing to accept that responsibility and future Board, because that's what we're doing. We're, we're actually setting future Boards up for a long-term debt, has to be in this discussion. The other thing is that museum roof, you're absolutely correct, that may turn into a rat's nest, like, we won't believe until we actually poke it open and find out what it is. We won't know. And then, and then we're left with an open roof, and how are we going to suddenly come up with additional $400,000 to $500,000 to make the corrections necessary to get it closed up before we get into winter again? It's going to create another problem. So I just hope that we, we really understand how much we're really putting a dead load on the future of our, our county by embarking on all of this, take a real serious look at that.
So Dennis, to your question on the next go-around, so if we replace all of the units as they are right now, certain units are used much, at a much higher rate, so just as we have units right now that are 40 years old, the next go-around, those units would be phased out at a little bit quicker rate than the 40-year life expectancy. So we would start to look at phased replacement that would not require all of these units to be replaced at one time in the future, so.
And I definitely appreciate that discussion, because that's, had we done that 20 or 30 years ago, we probably wouldn't be standing here today.
Exactly. Phase replacement is what is typically done, and we just have failed to do that. So this time will get us even, and then we will be replacing them over time for the, for the next 15 to 40 years.
No matter how the discussion goes, as long as that is part of the direction of the Board, the policy of the Board, to go in that direction, that, that is a solution. And that's all I'm trying to get in the discussion at this point.
I do have a question, and I know we had some paperwork that was presented to the Ad hoc Committee on it when we had this discussion. We are currently spending, just to keep these 40-year-old units and 20-year-old units operating, fiscal year, we're spending how much money just to keep them updated and going?
Tens of thousands. When R22 was still available, the last couple of years, I've stockpiled at the tail end of the fiscal year, the maintenance on the equipment, the replacement of the motors, so it's, it's substantial on the amount of money that we're...
Around $200,000. I'm trying to remember what, what was presented to...
We budget $400,000 for new units, and then a lot of the ongoing costs are just costs that are absorbed through my, my typical yearly budget. So that would decrease substantially with new units, that it's monies that we just spend because we have to.
So Patrick, are you talking about leaking evaporator condensers? Are you talking about line sets? Is it, is it all the way through the system?
Across the board. I mean, any, you know, with, with this number of units of this age, you can pretty much call out any one of a number of different situations, from leaky units to just outdated motors, pulleys, you name it, so.
Thank you.
So I, I hear that we could set our priorities and add stuff to the list through, through, through this meeting. Would we like to take public comment and then possibly sit down and set a priority list? Is that the intent of the Board?
Okay, public comment? Seeing none?
If you want to stop by HVAC. Air conditioning's important, people.
Okay, Ms. Coway has a question?
What is it about the Health and Human Services Building?
I'm sorry.
What is it about the Health and Human Services Building?
I was just being illustrative of some of the potential things that could be added into the list for consideration. Frankly, taking a bit of liberty with the discussion, if, if I were to give a recommendation to, to the Board, we've heard the complexity of the issues and that significant debt financing could be involved. My own opinion is, between the museum roof and the detail and the potential risk there and the absolute need for us to look at a bigger, the bigger picture with animal services, that those two really do need the Ad hoc attention in the long term. It really gives us, an administration, a monthly opportunity to get a fill for, obviously not the whole Board, but fill for what the Board's direction would be as we bring things forward. And quite frankly, that, in my opinion, is going to require a larger-term strategic financing approach, that not only can we work with the Ad hoc on, but we can engage the Debt Advisory as we move forward. So trying to bring it all back together, not just touch on it piecemeal, you have, we'll be talking about an HVAC replacement where, to this point, I've asked for direction for Board on a financing. That would be somewhere in the neighborhood, depending on how we go about it, of about $2.5 million. That would be something more immediate, and as we get further down the road, on the museum and the roof and any potential risk in that building, and clear direction on where we would put an animal services building, what it would be scoped like, then we could continue talking more about a larger strategic financing that would encompass both the, potentially the DA's building, the animal services building, and then any debt that we've already taken onboard for the HVAC financing could be rolled into a larger debt. I'm not an advocate of taking on more and more debt. I'm also not an advocate of borrowing for greater than the length of time that a product can be expected to last. And what I mean by that for HVAC borrowing, I wouldn't recommend anything more than 15 years. In fact, I'd be closer to a 10-year borrowing. But if we were to look at a larger financing package that includes everything from philanthropy to general obligation bonds to commercial type of borrowing, whatever a strategic package looks like, adding $2.5 million on to a 30-year borrowing package doesn't really inhibit the county in any long, long, in any way that's, that's a deep risk to us. So if, if it were me, and I'm taking some liberties here, I would suggest that we take a phased-in approach. We handle the projects that we can handle that are before us, do a good job of taking steps to move forward, because quite frankly, we haven't done that in the past. That's why the old jail stands as a monument of failure to get projects done. And so we keep stepping down the road on the projects that are before us and we can handle, while in parallel, we're working with the appropriate groups, in this case, the Ad hoc and the Debt Advisory Committee, to look at how we bring the bigger package to fruition.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, and I understand what you're, you're saying there, and I don't wholly disagree with you. But I, I think the only way that we can keep these items, the animal shelter and the museum in the forefront, is to at least add them to this list and maybe have a six, put them both as number six and put a TBD in front of them. And then the Ad hoc Committee, when we meet, we can start discussing our paths to getting these somewhere in line to be completed. At least they're there, they're on there, and it shows that we're not, we're cognizant of them, and we're going to come together sometime with a plan to get all of them completed, so.
Supervisor Mills? I agree. I think that the, those two need to be literally on the list, to have them just on a shelf somewhere, doesn't create a need or priority or any kind of direction. So if the Board just simply puts them on the list, then we can start that conversation, and it will have some meaning. So I would like to see them on here, at least as number six, with the idea that as things move around, we may see something else change in terms of its priority or where it lands on the list. We may say that we can fund this, or we can finance this in certain ways, and that will allow it to move up in the list. Other things may create some, there may be other... us to move as quickly as we think we can. So that's why I say having it on the list will allow the rest of staff to have that complete discussion on how we, how we're able to fund it.
Supervisor Garmini.
Yeah, I just want to throw in, I might even, I mean, I think having those on the list is, what's measured is that, right? And so, but I, I think I'd probably put them in with five. We're still trying to figure out all those parts. We just need them, I think on the list. I think we have them sixth, that means they dropped down. We need to look at this comprehensively. And, and as Patrick has pointed out to me, and I think Al said, well, the jail still existing is a monument to not get anything done. Patrick told me in 2015, this, not this board, but Board of Supervisors took on HVAC and decided send a couple coins that way and hope it was going away. So we have to, and I think Supervisor Callaway put, this is a lot of housekeeping stuff that's been avoided for years. HVAC is really unsexy, but so is having employees working in 110 degrees or 20 degrees. So we just have to do this stuff for the next 30 years. If we don't do our upkeep, things will fall down around us and it's going to be very unsexy. No one likes to vote for air conditioning units, but we need them.
Was there something further, Ms. Callaway?
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in how this dovetails with debt advisory. I, I think debt advisory has to come up with different permutations for how we would fund these things. So it could be that some of this might have to wait, or there's different funding mechanisms that we use for different projects. And I mean, I don't feel qualified to say this is more important than the other. I mean, for me, the animal shelter goes to the top of the list. But unless debt advisory is integrated with the ad hoc committee, I mean, I don't see how we can make a decision because you're going to have different funding mechanisms for each of these projects or five of them under a COP.
Supervisor Toffenelli.
I'm not sure I understood everything she said. I think I got pieces of it. She's considered, she's talking about funding for each one of these being separate, I think is what she adjusted what, Maria, you were saying. The, and that, I can't tell you, but, but we're near the end of the road from all the other boards pushing this forward and pushing it. So we're at the point where we have over 40-year HVAC systems. We have a museum that has been ignored and is getting worse. We have the Old Jail that we talked about. We thought originally, when we were on the board, that we were going to use funds from the bonds to do that. And it should have already been done, but we found out we couldn't use those. So it's an ongoing thing and I'm in agreement with Patrick and have been on, it's an eyesore and it is a monument of not being able to get something accomplished, especially with the money we spent on all these HVACs to keep them in place and all the other money that we spent. When we're talking about, we, we were looking at $300,000 max to get that taken down. I mean, we should have committed funds from somewhere, teetered funds or somewhere to get that done a long time ago. So, you know, putting them on a list, I'm, I'm in agreement with Jack. I just mentioned number six just so we could get the votes, but I, I'm in favor of putting the other two on five and they're on the list, they're there. We can work towards getting them accomplished. When we find funding sources for things or whatever, we'll, we'll determine that, whether it's next year, the year after, or the year after. But we, we've got to keep them on this list. We've got to keep them forward in front. So they're in front of us and instead of being pushed back and keep out of sight, out of mind, the way it's been going. So.
So do I understand you Supervisor Toffenelli, that you're pulling the board to keep the priority list in the order it is, adding the museum and animal shelter to be determined under number five? Would the other two be determined and as things fall off the top of the list, we come back and prioritize those?
Yes.
Moving forward. Okay.
Just to a consensus.
Ms. Callaway?
I mean, if we all agree, we just do it.
I agree.
I agree.
You agree?
We're in agreement.
We're in agreement. Is that better than a poll, isn't it?
Agree, yes. Either way, we're came to the same consensus.
And this kind of helps us a little bit because we do have to respond to the grand jury. We told them that we would be back to them.
We did in March.
In March. So if we've now created this as a priority, it helps us and them to understand we are serious about moving it.
To be determined.
But it's still a start. It's a better start, it's a better start than, it's a better start than where it was.
Yes, sir.
I might add a suggestion, since it is a priority and we are compelled to provide a response, that maybe we consider, as we're moving forward for our study sessions, that we include the animal shelter in a broader conversation, maybe in February as a study session, so that, that'll help inform how we move forward at the ad hoc and with the debt advisory. It'd be good to know, for all of us to be on the same page to know how many different plans have been out there about the animal shelter, where it might go, what are we considering right now. It's, it's, it's quite a morass. Are we going to look at buying a new piece of property and building a new building? Would we put it in the same piece of property it's on? And so those are things we can kick around at a, at a study session so I can get some more clarity on, on how I can help drive a plan forward on that.
In favor? Yes.
Let's talk about it.
All right. This was a informational item. So we'll move on to, as long as no one else has anything to say on this item, we'll move on to item number 22, the report on cannabis regulatory program implementation. All right, do you want, do you need a minute?
Just a minute.
Okay, we'll take five-minute break. Thank you. Mr. Alt? Oh, Ms. Severin?
You are ready.
Oh, okay. Agenda item 21. I apologize. Mr. Alt, please proceed.
Good afternoon, members of the board, members of the public. I appreciate the opportunity today to talk about the cannabis regulatory program. This is our first update since we've had opportunity to take pre-application for the regulatory program. What we'll talk about, we'll cover here today quickly. We'll do some introductions to some program office staff that you haven't met yet, or maybe you've met them, but not in this capacity. Give some background on the program. We're, we're going to tell you in some specifics about the pre-application process. We'll talk about the office. You may have seen the office when you came in, so we will give you specific information about the office and its hours. We'll give you an update on where the, all of the preapplications stand to date. We want to talk about the letters of conditional authorization and the importance of those in our pre-application process. This will be the first update you've had, you've had on the background check process since it was approved. And there's a few outstanding issues we want to inform the board of and, and have consideration for maybe study sessions and more discussion moving forward. So introductions quickly. Obviously, you know Mr. Turner sitting next to me. Typically, he's sitting here as counsel, but today he sits here as interim director of cannabis control. I can't say enough how much work he's done in that role. I'm not sure what the guy types, but it must be 70 or 80 words an hour because, a minute rather, because he, he, sorry about that, Freudian slip, per minute. He, he gets work done at a rate and at a quality that I, I can't even begin to, to, to explain. I envy it and I admire it. So he's been a great addition in the role while still doing a lot of legal work. Ben Diamond, I'm not sure if he's here. You probably are familiar with him from the urgency ordinance. He was here before as a planner. He's been amazing as well. He's energetic. He puts a lot of effort into the program and he's thoughtful about his craft as well. And then one last name that you'll see here, Karen Osborne. She began recently in the office. It's been a great opportunity to have her. As you recall, she was in the CAO's office and retired from that office. So when inquiring about Karen and if she might be a right, the right fit for us in the office, what I, what I was told repeatedly, repeatedly is Karen knows everything about everything. And she's proven that to be true. She knows where everything's at. She knows our processes. She knows our systems. And so at the end of the day, we have three people that have done amazing work over in that office as an interim and two extra hires. And I really appreciate the hard work that they've done in, in getting this program moving, moving forward. Prior to our interim and extra hire staff coming on board, I just want to run through, real quickly through some timelines that'll provide some context for some of the things we'll talk about here today. As you recall, on October 1st, 2019, the board authorized the creation of the program office. Subsequent to the program office, the board adopted 17.95 and 9.22 on October 22nd. You also then adopted that same date fees for 17.95 and 9.22. Those fees are going to be integral to our discussion as we move forward here in the next few pages. Also, on the 22nd, you authorized the Division of Cannabis Control, ultimately through the CAO's office, to pursue state and federal level criminal history. And we're getting very close to having an ORI. I'll dig deeper into that in some slides later. And then the ordinances became effective on November 22nd, 2019. And last but not least, the fees took effect on December 23rd, 2019. And December 23rd, 2019 is an important date because that is the date that the Division of Cannabis Control in its infancy started accepting pre-applications. And we did that in the board overflow room next door. And at the time, we didn't have any of the interim staff that I introduced earlier. So at the time, the CAO's office staff accepted the applications throughout the day. And I want to be quite specific as to who that was. That was Kathy and John in OES and Economic Development set aside the other priorities that you have given them as a board to sit at the table and receive 49 applications and, and work with those who were submitting or pre-applications throughout the day on the 20, 23rd. I really appreciate their help. They did, they did so and, and, you know, putting aside their own work and were very, I got a lot of compliments for how they approached that work throughout the day. Kathy and John were joined by IT staff that day, again, putting aside their own priorities and taking it, taking these pre-applications and entering them in to track it. And, and again, it was a nice team effort to have folks that weren't hired for this program but were great contributors to making the, the pre-application process move, move forward. As we moved through the 23rd and closed off that kind of group day of pre-application submittal, we moved into a little bit more normalcy on the program and we were receiving the pre-applications through the CAO's office. Tony and Monica primarily were receiving them, but I think Bonnie's left the room. There were days when Tony and Monica had breaks or lunches or were ill or whatever else. And Bonnie sat at the front counter and, and did a lot of this work as well. So I really appreciate that she was selfless enough to do that as well. So as we took them in, in, in the CAO's office, we brought, Ben was being phased in, Ethan was also working on doing the reviews of the pre-applications. And as they completed reviews of the pre-applications and gave authorization for us to reach out to those who had applied, we began setting appointments for the submissions that had made it to, for lack of a better term, initial candidacy or conditional authorization. My office would then invite them to come in, receive a letter of conditional authorization, receive the permit fees. And, and we did, we did that for about two and a half weeks into the middle of, of January. Well, about that same time, in the middle of January, we then had the opportunity to start transitioning to the staff that I introduced earlier and moved into, sorry about that, started transitioning into the Division of Cannabis Control and its own office. And this is really where Ethan took over and, and started working with staff and creating some specified space for the Division of Cannabis Control. And he's done all this work and I'd really like to have you hear from him at this point forward of what's been done with the office and the review process and where we currently stand in the program. Ethan?
Let me park this for a second. Thanks, Al. Ethan Turner, Division of Cannabis Control. One of the main things that we've done is just opened up an office. We now have a phone number and a location where people can come in and talk to us and submit application documents and get their questions asked. That's our telephone number. And during the day, Karen is there every day. I'm frequently there and Ben Diamond is often there. And one of the things we've also done is we've got a website up and running and, how do I close this?
Just skip out.
Which I'd like to show you briefly and, and show some of the new features of it because they're important for applicants to know about so they can continue to get through the program. First of all, this is the, this is our main page. It's been developed by the IT department using a new template they have. I think, I think it looks really good. They've done an excellent job. In particular, Kelly Stefanic created this webpage, chose the graphics and put together all the texts and links and everything for us. And so she's been really helpful, as has the entire IT department. A lot of this has been up for a little while, but the newest feature is a regulatory compliance tab. And on that tab, basically it contains all of the requirements and steps that a person must go through to get a permit. And starts with basic eligibility and has dropdown menus for that, which I won't really go into right now. And then, but down below, it has all the mitigation measures that a person has to go through in order to get their permit signed off by our department. And a lot of that has been sort of mysterious to many of the applicants to date. But the various departments that oversee each of these mitigation measures has helped me to create a guide for how to get through these requirements. For, for example, on this one, greenhouse gas emissions offsets, that's run by the Environmental Management Agency and the Division of, or our Air Pollution Control District, in particular Doug Carson. And they set up a, a PDF document that can be followed and tells people how to purchase offset credits and how to comply with the mitigation measures that are required under the ordinance. For traffic impact fees, down below, it's another mitigation measure required under the EIR. Josh Pack helped create this portion and even created a rim fee calculator that you can download to determine what your rim fees are likely to be. It's not exact because every site is different and it depends on which benefit basin you're in, but it's an Excel spreadsheet that can be downloaded and a cultivator can enter in his particular information and find out roughly what his rim fees or her rim fees are going to be. For well pumps and pump tests, that's also handled by environmental management. And again, Brad and his group stepped up and created guidelines for how to comply with this requirement and created a PDF that has all the questions that they're going to need to be able to answer in order to comply with that requirement. And again, Brad has...
Excuse me. He just needs to say exactly what he said to me out there.
Um, this isn't the time and place.
Yeah, it wasn't for me either.
Okay.
I didn't say I...
I would, I please, order.
Yeah.
Please, um, if you have a complaint.
I do.
Then, then put it in with the proper authorities. We are not them. Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. The, so this is the well pump test, which is a prerequisite to getting a permit. And it's also an operating restriction that has to be done periodically for the first three years of operation for a cultivator who relies on wells. And again, our Environmental Management Agency put together a... And again, our Environmental Management Agency put together a guidelines for how to comply with that ordinance. And it goes so on through the various mitigation requirements. Setback requirements for odor, this is the... It lays out the requirements. And I'd like to point out that with regard to separation requirements for sensitive uses, our I T department and their award-winning G I S team put together a layer for us to use that identifies every single sensitive use in the county and that we can identify whether or not a parcel is too close to one in minutes by using that G I S layer. And they did a great job on that. And then there's a section below for remediation. A lot of people are concerned about remediation requirements. And Doug Oliver, the Chief Building Officer, has put together protocol procedures and a checklist that is still in the works for people to be able to follow when meeting the remediation requirements. And there's a telephone number that he set up for... To leave messages where growers can request appointment dates to have their former cultivation site signed off as having been remediated. And to date, I think only about nine people have signed up to have their sites inspected, but more are in the pipeline. For cash deposit and surety bond, a lot of people already know how to do this from having dealt with their state applications, but there's a little guidance there for that in a form that can be filled out to demonstrate that they've gotten a bond for site remediation for their future site should it later be abandoned. And below, we have all of the regulatory requirements that typically apply to any business but that are also interwoven into Chapter seventeen dot nine five as permit prerequisites and as operating restrictions, such as building code compliance, fire code compliance, and talks about mandatory site inspections. And each of these dropdown menus has content that is from every single land use department in the county related to how they're involved in overseeing the regulatory program. And every department had helped with that. And that's about it for the website, but I think I encourage board members and cultivators to go in particular to that section for how to proceed with their application process. In the status of the applications, so far, we received seventy-nine pre-applications. A lot of those have been reviewed. About half of them had... Were a little bit incomplete or needed corrections and some were just plain ineligible. They just submitted, perhaps hoping they would get through, but they wouldn't be. And of those, thirteen have resulted in issuance of conditional authorizations. And I'll talk about more about what that is in a minute. But many more are waiting to come in because they need their consultants, their draftsman or other people to prepare their premises plans and their cultivation plans. And so there's a few waiting in the wings just for their design review professionals to finish their work so that their application will be complete. And today, we've collected thirteen applications and there's five appointments for next week. And I'll talk about the application process and CEQA in a minute. So the letter of conditional authorization is issued by the county to demonstrate to the applicant and to the state, to communicate to the state that that person is... Has a pending status and that they're authorized locally to apply for a state license. And they only can get that once they have demonstrated that they have individual eligibility, that they were in the former program or purchased the right to apply from someone who was in the former program and that their parcel meets the zoning requirements of the code. And that's just one of two legs that is required for them to get a provisional license. And the second is CEQA compliance. And where it's not complete, they have to demonstrate to the state that it's underway. And Peter Maurer helped a lot with this part of it. Over the last several months, he and I, as well as Al, have been on conference calls with C D F A, their lawyers, their consultants. And we've finally come to an agreement about how this part of it will work. And Peter drafted a checklist that's based on an appendix G of... Well, no one knows what an appendix G is, but it's a checklist that shows that mitigation measures are being complied with, to comply with an environmental document. And once we initiate this checklist, the state will deem the applicant to be demonstrating that they are on the road towards compliance with CEQA. And so we issue a letter of conditional authorization and initiate this checklist, then a person will be eligible to apply for a state license and get a provisional license. But they won't be able to cultivate in Calaveras County until we issue their local permit and validate it. And that means meeting all the other requirements that I specified earlier and that are delineated in the regulatory compliance portion of the website. So a letter of conditional authorization just communicates to the grower and the state that their application is pending and that they're authorized to submit an application to the state. And with any luck, with that letter and with the issuance of the CEQA checklist, they'll be able to get provisional licenses hopefully before their local permit issues. And once the local permit issues, we can validate it and they can start cultivating. So that concludes my portion of it. And I suppose at the end, we can deal with any questions you may have about that. And Al's going to talk about the status of our background check program.
So between Ethan and I, we've split these responsibilities to a certain extent. Obviously, the C A O's office kicked off the pre-application process as I described earlier. It's transitioned now into what's a more normalized office, I guess in terms of a building. They don't have furniture in there yet, but we've got staff. They're working daily. They're interacting with persons submitting permits. So they're pretty much on the application process. I have, in my office, kept the process of moving the background check process forward that was authorized under nine point two two. The background check process really consists of three parts. The first of which is our California Department of Justice application. That was in the introduction or the background, I talked about the board authority to do that. After the board took action in October, we did put our paperwork forward to the D O J to get what's called an O R I number. I'll talk about that more in a minute. That's one piece. That's the fingerprint process and that's where you go through LiveScan. We have a secondary process that we talked a lot about in October when originally the background process was being considered by the Sheriff's Department. One of the things that was key, I think a key interest of the board, is that there were... We had also applied for a triple I, criminal history as well. So we, as not being in law enforcement, can't get access to triple I. So our opportunity to try and mirror a background program through the fingerprints and triple I was to bring on a third-party vendor to do a national database search. So I'll talk about that in more detail. And then the last piece, if you make clearance through both of the background checks, both through the fingerprint process and the third-party vendor, is then the actual issuance of a physical cannabis background clearance badge. This is... These things have developed over time with having considerations for how we would move these things to completion. We've had to look at different opportunities than what we originally put forward. In terms of the C B C B, it was we'll buy a machine and we'll print badges that look like this. And we found a much more articulate solution, I think, in moving forward. So kind of managing the pieces a little bit. Where are we on the O R I? The board approved the resolution. We subsequently submitted that to D O J. In the presentation that I did back in October, I added a link to anybody interested in looking at the D O J and what the requirements are for not only us to have an O R I, but part of the concept in our office was that we wouldn't drive the workload of the fingerprints and the LiveScan all through the Sheriff's Department. We've opened it up to any LiveScan vendor. And so what's important about that is you have to be a D O J qualified LiveScan vendor. So they have to meet all the same requirements as law enforcement agencies do. So if anybody wants to investigate what a requirement is to be a LiveScan vendor, I've provided the link here and gives you more detail. So once an individual completes a LiveScan and submits it, it goes into the Department of Justice. And the O R I number, for lack of a better word, is our electronic mail code where the fingerprint responses come back to our office. We haven't yet been authorized by D O J. We've been in close contact with them. They're nearing completion. Last week, when I talked to our representative, they thought that we would have it the end of last week or this week. Giving them some fudge factor, I would expect by the end of next week at the latest that we'll have our O R I number. Once we get authorized for an O R I number through D O J, then they've gone through their review process. They forward it to F B I then. And unfortunately for us, F B I process takes quite a bit longer and it's a two-part process. Frankly, when we submitted, I thought we submit to D O J and they submit it to F B I at the same time and these things happen in parallel. F B I will not review it until the D O J's approved it and passed it on to them. So as we stand right now, we're nearing issuance of an O R I for state-level background, but we don't yet have that for F B I and we're still in process on that. Once we get approval from the D O J, we'll be issued a training package. Anybody that's going to have access to the system will have to be cleared on their fingerprints as well. D O J has to approve anybody who's going to have access to the system. We need to be able to establish that we'll have a secure... Not only a secure computer, a secure room, locked files, et cetera. We have to commit to a certain level of confidentiality for those records. And until we've completed that training, they won't let us receive background responses. So that's soon to come. And then ultimately, once we have the O R I and we are approved, then we'll be able to essentially push out to C B C B candidates a LiveScan form where they'll be able to go on our webpage, as you've seen, is getting pretty well fleshed out. But they'll be able to download a LiveScan form, go anywhere to a LiveScan provider, pay their fees directly to the LiveScan provider and submit their fingerprints that ultimately will come back to our electronic mail code, which is the R O I. So that gets us through the fingerprint part of it and the LiveScan piece of it, but we've supplemented that with a third-party vendor. We talked quite a lot about the notion of a third-party vendor, but at the time, we hadn't brought one on board. We looked at different firms that provide this kind of service. And frankly, at the end of the day, the national providers that do these kind of background checks for Department of Transportation, employment, et cetera, are very similar to what we... They search for exactly the same types of things that we would need to. And even though our particular industry that we're interested in will be cannabis cultivation, it's the same sort of national database search. Those who will be compelled to do this, as you know, under nine point two two are the owners. And I made a note here on the owners, it's important to all note that not only will the owners be required to go through our background, they will also be required to go through background for Department of Justice, F B I and Interpol for their state permit. And then they'll have to come and repeat the process with us as well. Unfortunately, when they go through the process with the state and pay their money to do that background, no agency can transmit that data in our agency. We can't get it from our Sheriff's Department. We can't give it to our Sheriff's Department once we have an O R I, nor can a state agency pass it on to us. So the owners will be required to go through both processes. Though the workers, as are called in nine point two two, along with owners, will have to enroll in the background program via an application, download the LiveScan form, obviously go get their LiveScan done. We get what's called an A T I, which is really a receipt for a LiveScan, once a person goes and has their LiveScan completed. So that A T I is important for the LiveScan because it's the way that we are able to verify the person who's submitting us an application for a C B C B is the same person that ended up at a LiveScan vendor and got their fingerprints rolled. On a LiveScan form, there's unique identifiers, date of birth, social security number, et cetera, that are on the form for LiveScan. Those are verified at the vendor and those are the same data points that we'll take in when we enroll an individual into our background program. When we enroll an individual in the background program, we send that data to HireSafe and they'll then reach out to the individual who wants a C B C B directly. All of the personal information besides the unique identifiers will be exchanged between HireSafe and the C B C B candidate. All the fees will be paid for HireSafe's process directly to them and borne by the candidate. So we won't be accepting money for the LiveScan nor for the third-party vendor. Those will be paid to the vendor. Once enrolled in the program, a candidate for a C B C B then will go through a national database check by HireSafe. And then ultimately, their background certification profile is provided to the county. There's some steps in between. I won't go into all of what I've learned about what HireSafe does with the candidates, but it is important to see the kinds of backgrounds that they will be doing. So the candidate profile that they will provide us on somebody that's enrolled in the program, as you might expect, they're going to verify their names and their motor vehicle records, validate their social security number. But probably most importantly, and I think this is an important note to make, is those things that are at the bottom, Homeland Security, America's Most Monitored, F B I, et cetera, those are the kinds of things that we aspired in our background program to be able to get as close to the triple I as possible. I'm not making any assertion that this and this type of profile matches triple I that the Sheriff could have done, but this type of profile aligned with our LiveScan and our fingerprint clearances matched as closely as we could possibly get to having the same type of fingerprint or background program that the Sheriff's Office would have had. And then if you make it through these reviews, which admittedly are pretty robust, we will... Once we have all the files, I'll say "we," but it won't be me, at least at this point in time. If we add one back, it'd be Ethan. We'll compare the results in the LifeScan and the fingerprint clearance with the national database search to see if there's any excludable offenses in a person's background that would prevent them from having a C B C B. If there isn't, and just moving under the assumption that they're qualified to move forward, then the next piece of the process, the last piece of the process, would be a candidate coming to the Division of Cannabis Control and getting an actual C B C B. At this point in time, this would be where we collect the fees. We're ready to issue a C B C B, so a cardholder would have to pay us for our portion of the fees that were approved in the fee study. And then we initiate the process of producing a C B C B with a third-party vendor. It's pretty easy for us to generate them. We've gotten the equipment from the third-party vendor. They'll actually... We'll take the photograph here in the Division of Cannabis Control. We take all the biographical data of the individual. We upload it to a third-party vendor and they produce cards similar but at a much higher level to what we have in our own employee cards. The cards are important. I think, you know, they may just feel like they're just kind of a paper card that somebody will be carrying around, but I want to talk about the company we selected and why we are using these cards. The company is what's called Policin and Sheriff's Press or PAS 365. This company primarily does police and sheriff's badges. They also do a good many states concealed weapons permits. They do only... They're only licensed and authorized under their patent to issue some sort of I D card through a local government. So private industry can't go to them and, you know, just get some sort of identification badge. And so they're very comfortable with producing not only high-quality official badges but at a very reasonable cost, but more than anything, these badges that we have, I'm not sure why somebody would want a fake one to come to work for us. Hell, excuse me, we would... Heck, we would hire people. We have seventy open positions. So people aren't compelled to fake these, but they will be a C B C B. So an important part about the key... The cards are there are twelve different points of authentication. I won't describe them all here because that's part of the value of the card. But because they're so comfortable with doing high-level cards... comfortable with doing high-level cards, they produce what's called a hollow view card. So just looking at the card, any of our law enforcement officers or code enforcement officers can shine a flashlight on the card and see that there's a hologram on the card. That's the first level of identification of a valid card. I won't go into the others, but another big piece of why we selected this vendor is that on the back of our card, and I'm going to show you a copy of it here shortly, there is a QR code that any law enforcement officer, any code enforcement officer, any of us, frankly, any of us officials from the county can take a card, scan the QR card, and validate that the individual's picture that's on the card is the same person's data that's in the database. So you won't be able to take a card and fake it. If you mass produce the QR card on the back, it's going to come back to whoever's person is in the database under that. So we'll be able to authenticate the card against the person whose picture's on the front. And then last, we'll also be able to validate real-time, provided we can get an internet connection at the time. We'll be able to verify the validity of the card, meaning not only is the person on the card the person they said they are, but is that card still valid? If there's been any sort of revocation, we would be compelled under the ordinance to send a notice to the individual revoking their card. That doesn't mean they're going to turn them back in. So the QR code gives us the availability out in the field to verify real-time that a card is still valid and that we haven't gone through a revocation and the individual just didn't give us the card back. And so at the end of the day, it seemed to be a lot more articulate solution than pretty simple cards like we have for our employment here to be able to verify not only the person's background, but the person we're talking to out on a cultivation site is valid to be there under our ordinances. One last piece while we went with the vendor, we were struggling with how we would close the gap between once a person pays for their CBCV, they get batched up, they go to the vendor and it takes, they produce them in 24 hours and then they mail them back to us and we distribute them from the CBCV office. What that means is when you come in and pay your fees, you're not going to have this card in your hand, so you wouldn't be able to leave that day to go to your job and work on a site. So one of the things we worked with on the, with the vendor was production of a temporary card. It's a paper card, but there's just as many security features in it, so it can't be mass-produced and it's only good for, we haven't set the time yet, but we get to decide in the office whether it's going to be good for 10 days, 15 days, 30 days, and it'll be right on the paper card. So an individual that comes down and goes through all of these hoops to get, gets cleared, will walk out of our office with a paper card that's temporary so they could go to work that day. And then when their card comes in, then we can let them know at their leisure they can come back, as long as it's within the timeframe before the paper card expires, they can come down and get the more official card. And so this is an example. It's just a copy. This is not one of our employees nor one of our applicants. She's on every template card that they do. So you'll see a couple key points. You cannot see the security features of the card on this copy. And I don't even know all the security features on the card yet. But as I mentioned, across the face of this, we'll have a hologram. So if you look at it under light, you'll be able to see the hologram. Here's obviously on the back of the card, the QR code. We ask for a bar on the CBCV so that law enforcement, you know, hopefully from afar, even though these are small badges, they'd be able to see this bright bar. Obviously, they need closer inspection to know what's on them, but, you know, hopefully from a ways away, they'll be able to identify this. Then, of course, there's the biographical data on the back of the individual that would match up with the QR code. And so before we get into outstanding issues, we've covered a lot to this point from not only, you know, where we started a few months ago, staff, new implementation of 17.95 in the permit process. This is all new information on 9.22. So before we go into the outstanding issues, I'd like to pause for a minute and open it up to any questions the board may have. And we'll do that again at the end as well.
How long does it take to get the card down? You say 24 hours?
The, that was part of our selection process. The card manufacturer guarantees that they can produce the cards within 24 hours. So when we upload them, they produce them overnight. And so I asked them what their volume was that they could handle in a 24-hour period and they handled jobs of more than 10,000 cards at one time and they fulfill those orders in 10 hours. So we're well below that volume. So really, frankly, the wait is, we upload it, they produce the cards, they're ready to go out and mail the next day. The wait is really the shipping time coming back to the county. And that shipping time was why it was key that we wanted the paper temporary pass as well, so that somebody wasn't waiting potentially a week for mail and then they couldn't get back to the office. So they might go seven, eight, 10 days before they can even be out on the cultivation site doing the work that they've been hired to do.
Do you have some questions? I go back to your office, the office update slide. And have we anticipated or figured what the cost of the office per square foot is? Are we building that into the program?
No, this isn't necessarily the permanent home. This was the home, frankly, that had space available in it and was most appropriate to begin. The space seems to fit well, but frankly, it was the startup of the program. As we move forward into where it might exist permanently, even if it continues to be in this space, then we'll factor that in.
I'd also point out that in the fee study, we didn't identify square footage or anything like that of a particular office space, but we did calculate overhead cost for the total support that is needed to have an employee working. And that does include office space, air conditioning, phone, computer, all that stuff.
Okay. Do we have any idea on how many hours have been expended to date?
I don't have, we don't have that information, but we have been tracking it. We file reports with the auditor that are specific to the fee codes, one for CBCVs or 17.95.
We've been tracking hour by hour since adoption, the pay period following the adoption of the ordinances. So even in advance of the fees being, becoming effective, when we have our workgroup meetings, you know, any work that any of my staff or the staff that's performing now or any of the departments is performing is tracked hour by hour on a timesheet. We will compile that and not only use the data to inform the board, but also at some point ask for reimbursement from the cannabis programs when the time's appropriate.
Sounds like we're tracking it much better than we did the urgency ordinance.
It was one of the lessons learned that came out of the workgroup, that we didn't do a good job in the urgency ordinance and frankly, between the auditor controller and the CEO's office and some others, they were very adamant that that be a key piece. And so we've been very diligent about it. You know, at the end of the day, my perspective with it and what I conveyed to the workgroup is that the fees are allowable by law for us to collect. The cultivators are going to gain the benefit from us having the program. They have a pretty hefty fee to be able to support the program. And so we ought to track closely and be able to charge back against that. And so that's why we monitor it so closely and we'll continue to do that as well.
So you'll be able to get fairly close on what you figured to be the hours anticipated per permit?
Well, I'll say yes and no. I'll give you the depends answer and Ethan can certainly elaborate more on this. What we've learned through the process, originally when we set up that first day, we were hoping that we'd take in all of the pre-applications and that the pretty quick conditional review would be relatively easy. I won't speak for them on their reviews, but what they've conveyed is it hasn't been as quick as we thought. And so we're learning and we're tracking better on, you know, what are kind of the ones that pass through really well and what's the standard hour commitment on those and then what are the more complicated ones. And frankly, that's something that we'll have to build into the fees as we revamp. There are some adjustments, as we've learned through this program, that I can say, quite frankly, would add time and ultimately expense to the permit process, but there's also other things that we've learned where we can streamline the process and take, you know, level of effort and expense out of the process as well. So I don't know where it'll come out overall. We'll have to bring that back to you, but we've been tracking the lessons learned.
And you'll be able to have a better idea of cost for each worker to process a worker as well as a permit?
We haven't done a CBCV yet, so we'll do the same with a CBCV and track that. The process we're using now, I think, will be a little bit less in terms of what the interaction with a potential candidate would be. Where I don't know, where it's going to take some time to get our hands around the time, is the person who's ultimately responsible for comparing the DOJ live scan return with the third-party vendor results. We haven't seen a candidate profile from them yet, so it'll take some time to learn how to line up what we see in the live scan and the criminal information to the third-party vendor and then crosswalk it over to our own ordinance on what things are excludable. But we've talked about, you know, being able to create a template so that you can crosswalk off of, you know, the states that we're going to see a lot of returns from, for example, California. What are the list of codes that we might see on a criminal background that we can crosswalk over to what would be excludable from under our ordinance? But we don't have a good idea on that now, just because we haven't done a CBCV yet.
I've been on the website, so I know what it looks like. And it is a little different on our laptop than what you're portraying there, but it's fairly easy to track and follow where you're going. Have you tracked the cost to develop that? In other words, is IT given some idea on the cost to develop that website?
IT should also be tracking their costs, although they're typically, as Al just pointed out, in A87, a general fund program, so they, but they would have been included in the overhead cost that we put in the fee study. But I think for specific projects, we've encouraged Stan to have his staff track the costs as it relates to cannabis-specific projects.
And that's not just relative to the webpage. That's track at time. I think I failed to mention Henning by name when I was talking about the permit process. Henning has been amazing in not only developing the track at system and the use of it. Frankly, I think his development of that process is going to help inform all of our land use permit processes. He's been amazing on that. So we've specifically been tracking his time. Kelly Stefanik has been doing a website refresh for all of the county webpages. The board webpage has the look and feel of the cannabis page. So that piece of it isn't specific to cannabis, but the level of detail that she's put into our page and spent specifically on crafting our page uniquely, we've asked for Stan to have staff track those efforts that are specific to our program.
Just a note for auditing purposes, A87 does not apply to this situation. So anybody who wants to review it, please do so. In reviewing the PASP 365, I have their website up here right now to see what they are and the products that they offer. So you're thinking more along the lines of the high-security idea, not just the generic?
They're...
They have three levels. They have a generic, custom, and a high-security. So you're looking at the high-security one?
I think we're the midpoint. I don't remember exactly what their titles are. They do State of Georgia Police. They do a lot of federal agencies as well. We're not, we're not in a level, I'm not saying that they're producing FBI cards, but we're not the State of Georgia and FBI cards, but we're one step below those. You know, the 12 points of authentication is pretty significant. That's 12 more than we have on the cards that we were originally going to do. The QR code was really the biggest selling point for those in code enforcement and law enforcement when we talked to them, so that we know that somebody's not running around with a card that's been invalidated, that we could never get back from them. So that's probably the biggest key benefit to why we went with the level that we did.
And that QR code can be validated with their phone instantly, so it's not a...
Right. Provided there's internet service, provided they can access the internet. If they cannot, either on a pad or a phone, they can snap a picture and leave the site and go to a place that have connection and still scan, still have the opportunity to do that. As we know, there's some places in our county that we won't have internet. We did include in the fee study some pads and hotspots, for lack of a better term, so we'd have better access for reasons like this. Also access to the GIS layer and other things like that.
I'm sure there'll be more discussion, but that's, thank you for your responses.
Any other board comments, questions? I have one. I've also been through the website a few times. It's, as it's, you know, it's had a few adjustments along the way. Really, it's a tribute to IT and the coordination of all the departments coming together and what they put forward. I mean, it's, I would hope that, you know, in the future, we can continue to see coordination like this through, with everything the county does. You know, I think it's a step up from some of the things we have seen in the past. Not that everything hasn't seen this type of coordination, but this is a great template for how we could move forward on multiple issues, taking the cannabis out of the equation. I think that, you know, in the future, this is a good step in the right direction on how the county works on things. So, thank you. Is there anything else you would like to say, Mr. Alt?
Other than we'd like to move on to the outstanding issues, if there's no further questions about what we presented to this point, there's a couple of key things that Ethan will describe to you and the importance of them. And we'd like to talk about how we resolve some of these outstanding issues moving forward.
One I put on the top of the list is Chapter 8.06, which is everybody's favorite chapter to talk about. And it has undergone a lot of revision since it was last proposed, but in particular, 8.06.700 is the section that deals with expedited administrative enforcement for cannabis cases. And there's been some changes in state law that will provide us with more tools, but we have to codify them in our own ordinance. For example, the government code for ordinary nuisances requires a reasonable opportunity to correct for code violations that result in nuisances, but there's a particular exception carved out for cannabis violations. So the government code has been changed so we can immediately impose fines for illegal cannabis cultivation on day one when the citation is issued. Additionally, there's been a new cause of action under the Business Professions Code that would allow us to do additional cost recovery. And I, we need to change at least that portion of it. But also, I mean, overall, the ordinance is a different animal than how it was presented before. With two subsequent billing directors have each put their stamp on it and a new revised version was released last summer through a public announcement and it was posted on Pine Tree. And we got feedback that virtually everything that people were angry about was gone. And I would encourage the board members to review it. Doug Oliver is looking at it now to put his own stamp on it and change it some more, but we would like to be able to have that in effect by June, when outdoor cultivation starts to ramp up, so that we can use these procedures to do much more, much more effective enforcement that can happen much faster and will result in greater cost recovery. Second part I have up there is a Measure C. There's been a change in the state tax scheme that added a category of taxable products that we do not have. It's the, I'm forgetting the name of it. It might be whole plants. Yes, that's what it is. Fresh cannabis plant. So our ordinance contemplates dried flower and leaves and/or trim, as it's called in our ordinance, which is inconsistent with how it's described in state law. But then also has fresh cannabis plants in state law, but not in Measure C. So conceivably, a cultivator who was going to sell their crop directly to a manufacturer, as whole plants would evade taxation because we have nothing in our tax measure to capture that. Additionally, I've had numerous meetings with our Treasury Tax Collector, Barbara Sullivan, and talked about how things went last time and how things should go this time. And together, we've devised a number of suggested revisions that we think should be the subject of a study session. And these kind of revisions, unfortunately, would have to go back to the voters. So, and I talked to our clerk recorder about the timing of that and we do have... do have two all-male ballots, uh, one in August, which we could, uh, meet the deadline for, i- if there could be, um, an ordinance or a resolution passed to give it to the voters, uh, by, um, May, I believe it is. So, I, hopefully, we can schedule a study session to talk about Measure C and some proposed changes. In principle, uh, one of the major problems the tax collector has with it is that it changes her department into something that ordinarily is not, uh, which is, uh, a department that carries out a bunch of administrative functions, um, handles appeals, um, and, uh, whereas it is usually someone else, another department, that tells her what she should be collecting, and she goes out and collects it. Uh, and, uh, she doesn't have the staff or the resources to, to carry out, uh, administrative agency that does, uh, what Measure C requires her to do. Additionally, it has, uh, penalty provisions that are different from other taxes that she collects, and so, in order to track those penalties and how, and how they accrue, has, so that's to be done manually, uh, using spreadsheets, and, uh, it's, it's not feasible. So, we'd want to, uh, have the penalties track penalties that are, um, charged for other types of taxes, so that it's all the same. Um, and, uh, lastly, uh, we have up there, um, fees. When Al and I began working on the fee studies, uh, the ordinance wasn't complete, uh, and we only, uh, did fee studies for three fees, um, the application fee, the continuation fee, and the appeal fee, and as indicated on the board there, there's a transfer fee and an expansion or change fee, uh, that were, and it ended up in the ordinance, uh, that we weren't thinking about when we started doing the fee study. So, um, we're going to have to come back with a resolution to adopt those fees. And so, I would hope that the board would consider, um, a study session to either tackle, uh, perhaps to tackle the three of these. Um, the top one, um, may not be ready until, uh, this Oliver, Doug Oliver, has had an opportunity to figure out what he wants to have in the, uh, latest iteration of, uh, Chapter 8.06. And I'd also point out that many of the consi- the, um, pro- uh, issues that were raised by Supervisor Gera Mendi and Supervisor Tofanelli and, and by, um, other supervisors during those hearings are reflected in the, the new ordinance, in particular, um, uh, the board retaining a final authority to hear, uh, appeals of code cases that are not cannabis-related, um, and, and a variety of other things that were raised. We have a new draft that I'd be happy to provide to any of you, that has, uh, um, and that is actually still available on the Pine Tree website, if you Google it, um, that has, uh, column, comments that talk about every single change that was made, why it was made, uh, including, um, at which public hearing the, uh, the change was suggested. Um, so, I, I think we've worked out a lot of the kinks that, that, uh, that the public and that the board had issues with, um, and then, um, but it, it still has to go to Doug, and Doug has to put his stamp on it and bring it forward, because it's his ordinance ultimately. Uh, but at least that led, that last section, 8.06 dot 700, would help us out a lot with administrative enforcement of cannabis grows, because, um, the legal growers are paying a lot of money, uh, to be involved in this program, um, and, um, they shouldn't have to compete with black-market growers, and with the tools that we already have, and with the additional tools that we could add to that chapter, uh, we could do a lot of damage to the black-market industry here, uh, in conjunction with what the sheriff does.
So, I, I'd like to add, um, Ethan provided, uh, a nice segue into, we've transitioned now from this being a discussion about ordinances and land use, and now we're talking about the program more holistically now that we're starting to move it forward. So, E- Ethan has introduced the notion that we're now working very closely with the sheriff, um, obviously code, uh, compliance as well. Um, Rick, at some point, will come forward to, uh, probably at mid-year and ask for some more money, but we're working closely together on how we can now look at this, this program holistically from end to end. For us to have a strong administrative program, we need to do a good job with everything that you've seen here, but we also need to work closely with the sheriff's department and advocate and do what we can to get resources, so that he can do a good job with the black market as well. We feel an obligation to those that we're inviting into the permit process to make their product more viable by making sure we, um, work hard on the black market and get, try to get Rick what he needs to, to do a good job with that. Conversely, Rick's also looking at it from, now it's not just a matter of, that's a land use issue, you guys work through those processes, how are we going to coordinate together, how do we do the best job inter-departmentally, like we have with all of our other departments, to make sure that we, that not only that he knows we're trying to have a strong program in supporting his, he's going to do anything he can to support our administrative program, our regulatory program as well. So, it's nice to kind of break free of this, they're doing their thing, it's law enforcement, we're doing our thing, it's administrative and regulatory. Now, we're going to be bringing back more discussion for this board and our public to know that we're working in concert to make sure we have our, we aspire together to have a very strong regulatory program that's effective, that also supports our law enforcement with resources they need to have a very strong law enforcement approach to, uh, the black market and all the other types of things that, um, that people have concerns with, environmental issues and things that go along with, uh, illicit grows. And so with that, I'll move on to one last question and answer opportunity.
Anyone else? Supervisors, any questions or anything prior to public comment? I do, I do have one more thing. Uh, Mr. Turner brought up Measure C taxes, um, there, you're absolutely right in some of the changes with the state that, you know, are much farther beyond what we approved in 2016. Um, you can bring up nurseries along with the fresh cannabis plants and, and a multitude of other issues, and I definitely think that the work needs to be put in, so that, uh, our, our tax collector is not burdening in work that's unnecessary for that department. I think that, uh, the thought behind that is definitely something I could support along with all these, and also bringing back the, uh, approval of the cannabis regulatory fees before us, so that we can discuss how we want to continue moving forward as a board, possibly at mid-year, or, or whatever, um, a- as we proceed. I mean, that's another outstanding issue, whether it goes forward in one way or another, that's to be determined by the board at that time, but that's definitely another outstanding issue that needs to come before us, so that we can start applying those fees that are for that, instead of pulling from other departments and burdening those departments for work that's not, you know, their responsibility, or, you know, with money that's not responsible for that. With that, I'll go to public comment.
All I can say is, wow, after that presentation, I don't even know where to start. Three minutes wouldn't even come close to hitting this, but I'll try to hit the high points. What I'm hearing today is the three pot lemmings who all ran off the cliff at the same time to get this done, when they were warned by at least two other supervisors to go slow. You didn't go slow. Now you got yourself in a pickle. You've, when you're asked about cost, the answer was yes and no. What does that mean? We go through the other things, funding, you've got money coming in, you can't spend it. You've Shanghai'd employees from other departments to serve on this, this circus, this clown car, and we, the background checks, you don't like the way, you didn't like the way the sheriff was going to do it, so you came up with your own stuff. Now we have an alternative, because the FBI takes too long, they're pretty thorough, but that takes too long. Now you've got background checks R Us that you can go to to get a quick card. Can anyone in that department get a badge? Can the C O get a badge through that department? I don't know, I looked at the list of some of the things you can't do, I don't know. Anyway, with the background checks, uh, you see, it could have been done through the sheriff's department, they had the expertise, they probably had the equipment, I don't know how you're paying for this. I haven't heard how one nickel has been verified and approved to be spent on this. And yet, time after time, Supervisor Mills will ask, "What is the cost?" The answer? "I don't know." "What does it cost for the website?" "I don't know." They were gracious enough to do it for us. "What does it cost for the office space?" "I don't know, but no one's using it, so..." We busted in there and we're using it. That belongs to the people of the county. They paid for that room, they pay for this building, they pay their taxes. They don't deserve to have their money taken for something else, without the opportunity to come up here, address the board, when you say, "We're going to spend this money, we have the authority to spend this money, this is what we're spending it on, and this is how much we're going to spend." You're going to go ahead and do it anyway, you don't care, but at least it gives people a chance to get up and say, "You know, I'm really not cool with all this." You took it. You took the employees, you took the money, you took the facilities, and you don't have one answer. You can't explain one dollar. It's your system. Uh, I'd hate to be in charge of something like this, because, uh, it's a real rat's nest.
Bill said pretty much a lot of the stuff I wanted to say, but public safety to me seems to be the utmost importance to what you guys are all voted for, and none of it is being addressed here. I feel like I'm out on my place when the sheriff's department is, has to share information with you, you just said you couldn't share it with him, and you can't get a triple I. And I know for a fact that the, um, Barbara Yook, her department was overwhelmed with murder cases whenever we had this stuff involved before, and her office was only designed to hold one or two cases per year, and at one point she had 11 open cases. And if triple I isn't available, you're subjecting us one more time, who live out there in the hinterlands with this stuff all around us, and now I'm still not going to know if the sheriff knows who's next door to me.
Good afternoon, Vicki Renke. Um, yeah, I just want to address some of this, and I hope, Marita, that you guys have a better policy now, that we can have some of our questions answered today on this ordinance, um, because I do have a couple of questions, I think they're very important questions and people need answers to. So, for one, we've had 13 conditional authorizations already given out within a couple of weeks. I want to know exactly what that condition was and why these people got this letter so quickly to go to the state to get a license. And then I want to be guaranteed that, because I've read this many times, that it is true that no one can begin any of the process to cultivate until they receive their local and state permits. That means no grading, no taking water, none of that, until all that's done, and I want to know the answer to that question. The other one that keeps coming up, and I've been bothered by it, and you guys all know it, because I've gotten up here several times asking this question, and this time I hope to get an answer, what does it mean to be able to sell your permit to someone else, or to give your permit to someone else, a permit that you don't even have yet? And I was told that you have to get the permit first, then you can sell it. That's not what I'm reading, that's not what I'm hearing. I've read it recently in a newspaper article, and just today it was mentioned, that you can give up something to somebody and then they can apply for the permit. Please explain that process, that's, that process needs to be explained to us, because to me, that is nothing but corruption, I don't understand it. So, and I know others don't either. The other thing that came up today, that you have the 12 conditional permit, um, authorizations, that means you've collected 163,619 dollars of the 2,386,590 dollars that you expect to collect from fees. Um, that may be a little over, because I used the 190, and I think maybe 153 was used for the fee study, but think about that, you know? Um, so I hope somebody's written down those questions. If not, could my supervisor do that, and please make sure that we get those answers today? Yeah, transfers of permits is huge. And then, when you gave out the conditional, um, letters for, for the license, for the state license, what happens if they don't pass our local permit process? They don't get a permit here, but they pass the state one, for, I don't know if that's possible, but it could be. What happens then, or the opposite, the state says no, and we've issued the permit? Thank you.
What is trust? What does that mean? Trust, to me, it means that if you fall backwards accidentally, somebody's going to catch you, because you trust them. I don't trust any of this. It's just beyond the pale. I'm just going to give one example. Supervisor Mills asks which of the three levels of ID cards are going to be used. CEO said he was not sure. I believe he, as the CEO, knows, but did not wish to reveal this knowledge to the legitimate question supervisors. Mills asked, "Is this really transparency? Is this really something that inspires trust?" This is a big hornswoggle on the people that live in Calaveras County.
Alice Montgomery, District 3. Um, I wanted to ask where in the regulation the pre-application process was. I didn't see that in 17.95, the pre-application process that was done. Um, background checks, we talked about different opportunities and articulate solutions and all that, you know, and learning about it. We had a sheriff's department that was able to do the background checks, we had a $10,000 or more machine, but instead, that process got duplicated, I think completely unnecessarily. Now we see what the, the vendor can do, we see all the processes that the vendor can supply us, but I wasn't aware that C A, uh, maybe he's trained in, trained to review law enforcement, but I know I'm not comfortable with anybody other than our sheriff making decision as to whether someone's background passes. And that's going to be difficult when, I, maybe I misunderstood you, that you can't share that data with the sheriff. So, I don't know how the sheriff is supposed to do his job when the background data is not shared with the sheriff. So, maybe I'm just not understanding this. Um, there's a delay due to badges arriving. Well, not when the sheriff does it. There's a delay due to the internet. Well, nope. And not even though, I, I maybe misheard you guys, but you said there is a delay if the, if they don't come, and then we have to use paper badges. I can make those look like probably, I, I think I can. So, I think we need to be careful with what we're doing here. Why isn't the sheriff doing this? I think Ms. Calloway had said she was uncomfortable, I might be wrong, with having them and maybe not having certain people pass them. That's why we had the sheriff do the background checks. And I may be misquoting you, but that's, that's how this whole thing started, the next thing you know, now we're taking out the background check process. Um, I think we need to really take a look at this. Um, I need to put as a matter of public record that any time that anybody comes up to me unwarranted and unwelcome, I, if I have to stop this meeting, I will. And, you know, it doesn't bother me when people come up to me, it doesn't even bother when they shove me, but it should bother you, Mr. Stopper. It should bother you. Okay, I'm done.
Oh, by the way, it was Jeff Bonafelt outside who did that.
That's not on the agenda, thank you.
You're most welcome.
Any other further public comment?
Uh, House of Gala, speaking for myself, and, uh, I have some experience, maybe one of the few people in this room that has experience in meeting some of the, uh, um, cannabis people that come to buy property, because I must have met over 100, maybe double that, uh, and have a pretty good idea where they're coming from, and, and also about their character. So, I don't have the fear that some people have of these people being evil, or, or from the devil, or anything else. the devil or anything else. They're people, and there's some bad ones, but overall, they're pretty normal business people, from what I could see. We learned, I mean, alcohol prohibition, that the ban on alcohol actually created a black market. A black market can only be created by government. You have to ban something before people will go outside and buy and sell whatever they want to buy and sell. Such is true with cannabis. The more that you regulate or restrict the supply or ban, the more black market you have. And then it's the question, just how violent do you get? You know, just how, do you break into people's homes in the middle of the night? You know, do you raid them? Do we have an effort to assassinate our public officials, or intimidate them, or threaten their families like they do in Mexico because of the drug wars, which are caused by a ban? So one of the things that we could do on the positive side is learn a lesson from what we're doing, get feedback from the industry. There should be some sort of committee with the industry to see what's happening, what's working, what's not. The pine tree thing was a good idea. Our ultimate purpose is normalization of the industry and protection of the public. The only reason for any regulation is for public safety. It's not to restrict bad people. On fees and taxes, the more we tax, we have to look at the economic effects of that. Do we know what the price of their product is going for now? It used to be $1,000 a pound. Is it $500? If it gets low enough, guess what? We just create a black market for no other reason than the amount of money we're extracting from those people. And here again, we've got to turn to the sheriff for a solution. Thank you.
Further public comment? Sir, to remind you, respect in the room, and keep it to the agenda, please.
Of all due respect, you let her say a couple of things. I appreciate a chance to say something regarding what happened. I appreciate it.
Sir, I would appreciate if you kept it to the agenda. If you have something to say to it.
Okay, well, you did let her say some things. I would like to just say publicly that I never threatened her, I never touched her, wasn't even within 10 feet of her. That's all I got to say. It was no threat, no nothing. Okay, so anyway, that's it. So I've been helping people with remediation, and I notice there's been a couple of different issues that have come up. One of them being that people were in the program, and they were renting from somebody. And now they're no longer renting from that person, and they're having a problem accessing the property. And I think one of the, maybe the solution could be that when people were in the program and they opted out, there was a, you had to withdraw from the water board. And in doing so, you provided pictures and whatnot of remediation, straw water to prevent erosion and whatnot. And if people can't access these properties to show you guys current pictures and whatnot, then maybe you could expedite, you know, the process by just allowing them to use those old pictures that they sent to the water board, as long as they still have them. That will probably save you guys some time and kind of satisfy that issue there, you know? Other than that, I think people are trying to get the stuff done by February 9th, which I think is a little challenging as well. Has that time been extended, or is that still the date?
That's what it said in the ordinance.
Okay, and so also with regard to that, do you, people that are...
Can you pause it real quick? Ethan, can we wait till then for answers and everything? This isn't a discussion. Please state your questions, and then at the end, we will go through the certain questions and respond accordingly.
Okay. I guess that's it. It's all good. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Mark Bolger, Rimrock Farms. I wanted to elaborate on some of the thoughts and concerns about the remediation. The notice of termination through the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board that Mr. Bonifeld just mentioned is one aspect I'd look at. Also, on many of these sites where the remediation occurred, you know, the building department has already gone out to inspect to see that hoop houses have been dismantled and taken down. Grading permits have gone through the Public Works Department. You know, I have one site that's no longer viable, that has already had two county inspections to basically verify that the remediation has taken place, and the water board on top of that. Seems redundant to send out a code enforcement official one more time. If that's what it's got to take, no big deal. I just, I feel like the work's already been done, and we're doubling down on something that the county's already spent money on. So, thank you.
I'd like to take advantage of the opportunity to agree with the opposition. I think what the comments by Mr. McManus were right on target regarding the funding, although I think he laid the blame at the feet of the wrong supervisors. And so I'd like to ask Gary specifically, because I know Mr. Mills will never agree. I think rather than sticking it to the taxpayer right now, the money is there for this program from the registrants, and I would like you to consider maybe bringing that back so we can get a four-to-one vote. So we don't put it on the taxpayer's burden, we put the burden on the people who are registering and paying the money for the program. It's great to agree on something for once. Thank you.
Any further public comment? With that, I'll bring it back to the board. You took note, Ethan? Mr. Al.
Yeah.
Can you go through these? I'm going to check off some of the ones I felt are important. I think Ms. Callaway has some written down here.
Sure.
And then we'll come back around after you address the ones that you took note of that you felt were pertinent to answer.
Yeah. I guess we go backwards, because those are the ones that are fresher on my mind, and I also didn't write them down, the more recent ones. With regard to site remediation, the points made by the two public speakers are well taken, and were also something we were already considering. There's numerous instances where a former cultivation site is no longer in the possession in the applicant, and we're sort of in a position like we were in many instances under the U.O., where we're trying to figure out what the conditions were at a prior time. You know, in the U.O., we had to look back at what was going on on May 10th. And at some point in the future, we may be ending up looking back at what the conditions were prior to February 9th. And the notice of termination is something that we have been looking at, and it's really a perfect snapshot, because photographs were sent by all the former applicants when they did their notice of termination with the State Water Resources Control Board and sent to the state agency. So those photos are taken at a given point in time, and we can identify that the site was remediated. And the second speaker talked about other county inspections that go on from the building director and Public Works. And in those situations, we will be able to tell without doing a subsequent inspection that the site was remediated. We have, in tracking, we have parcel files that tell us pretty much everything that's going on on a site, whether there's been code violations, whether there was an inspection during the U.O., and so forth on down the line. And in many cases, if a property owner is not the cultivator, and they just really don't want the county to come back on their property to investigate a former cultivation site, then we just, we can't really do much about that, and we have to call it good. So we won't be doing inspections on every single site as they, to prove remediation, where we have other ways of demonstrating that remediation's occurred, or where the current property owner won't let us. And the, somebody asked about the 13 that are processed. In the code, in 17.95030, Section B, it talks about what is required before we can issue a letter of conditional authorization. And it's most of the requirements of O5OD, which are, the individual is eligible because they had a state license, they were in the former program, they don't have any delinquent taxes, and they didn't have their state license revoked. Then the second part is, the parcel that they're proposing to use as a cultivation site is suitable for the proposed use. And so when someone meets those requirements, then we can issue them a letter of conditional authorization. And a letter of conditional authorization is just that, it's conditional. It just says that the application process has begun. When CDFA asks us about the status of an applicant, they give us three options: permitted, pending, or not, or reject. And if someone has a letter of conditional authorization, their status is pending, and they can continue with the state application process. And if someone asks, "What happens if a state license is issued and no local permit is issued?", then their permit will never be validated, and they won't be able to cultivate. If a local permit is issued and they're unable to get a state license, then their permit can't be validated, and they'll never cultivate. The right to apply, someone asked about that, that's in subsection 17.95050D15, and that allows anyone who meets the eligibility requirements of D1, which is, was in the former program, had a temporary license, can transfer or sell their rights to another individual who meets the requirements, the other requirements of subsection D, which is, they never had a search warrant on a property they've owned, they haven't had a violation under 8.06.700, and a variety of other requirements. So both the transferor and the transferee have to meet certain eligibility requirements. And the transferor, the initial applicant, has to be someone from the former program who had a state temporary license. So that's how that works. Oh, the pre-application process, someone asked about, where is the statutory authority for that? And that's in 17.95060 subdivision B, where it talks about, "The county's designated department shall promulgate criteria for the issuance of a permit, including but not limited to..." And then it goes on to list a bunch of things. "We decided, with the authority that's granted in that subdivision, to divide the process and do a two-stage process, because we didn't want to accept 12 grand from somebody who is going to be denied 10 minutes later when we found out that they're ineligible under D1, or that their parcel was going to be ineligible." Because then we have to go through, it just didn't seem right. I mean, and didn't make any sense. So we decided to make that first step, and we had that first step coincide with the requirements of the issuance of a letter of conditional authorization, and we felt like that was just the most streamlined way to divide the application process up. And I don't see how, that is clearly within the authority granted in the ordinance to the department that handles the program. And those are all the ones I wrote down, and if anybody has any additional ones that I didn't write down, I'd be happy to address them.
Overall, you addressed everything I wrote down here, other than, you know, through, there was one point made when it came to, someone alluded to that no one was allowed while going through the permit process to do any grading or drawing water from a well. And the case on that is?
Oh, you can, if you can get a grading permit to conduct legal grading for any purpose that you want. I mean, if you want to flatten some area of your property for fun, as long as you go get a grading permit and have an engineered grading plan, and do erosion control mitigation, and have an engineered set of plans, you can do that. And we don't inquire as to what the purpose for that activity is. Same with a building permit. If someone wants to build a large commercial building, we don't ask whether it's going to be for processing, or if it's going to be for a roller skate rig. As long as they go through the applicable ministerial permit processes, they're more than welcome to do that.
Was there anything I missed there, Ms. Callaway? Any other supervisors have anything?
I just have a couple things that I wrote down here. As far as not being able to share information with the sheriff's office, you can give the names of those applicants to him, and he can run his own background check on them, if he so chooses to do so. I mean, that's an option, instead of trading information across.
Yeah, so I'm being very specific, that we cannot take the returns from the State Department of Justice and share those with the sheriff's office, in the same way he cannot share them with us.
That's correct. But you can share the names of the applicants, that he can run his own check if he wishes.
He can do whatever he wants with...
So he still will have, he will still have the ability to do a background check on them.
I'd like to add to that, if you don't mind, supervisor. There's some provisions of the code that require us to share information with the sheriff.
And I remember...
And that has to do with the self-distribution permits, et cetera.
And I fully remember those conversations, and I remember the conversation that the sheriff had, and what you were going over today about not sharing information.
So that's part of why we went with the QR code on the card that PAS produces. We don't have the capability to do that. Neither was Rick going to, and the $10,000 machine that he was going to buy was going to produce these. And these can be faked. What the sheriff's office can do, if they choose, with the QR code, run the QR code, validate the picture and the name on the front, and then they can run whatever they want through the law enforcement system, all they want.
I was just pointing that out.
No, that's a good point. I appreciate it.
The other question I had had to do with access problems that was pointed out, if they were renting property from somebody, and that owner says, "No." Google Earth, you can go back in time and see a period of time. It's not completely updated currently, but I believe now that we're in 2020, you should be able to get to 2019 on Google Earth. So at some point, you can at least go back and look at the property via the map that was filed under the urgency ordinance as to where the grow was, and see if the remediation shows up on Google Earth. It won't be current, again, if they didn't do anything to it. But at least 2019, it should start appearing on Google Earth, because we're now into 2020. So that's another possibility to look for remediation.
Certainly, we can look at that. The building department has overtaken that part of it, and they've developed their own criteria, and COCOMpliance has all sorts of investigatory tools, including Google Earth, and also the flyover photos that the county is...
Flyover photos, correct. Okay, that's about all I have.
Supervisor Mills.
Yes, so I go back to that question of, how are we going to be able to ensure remediation with limited or no access? It continues with this discussion, that we have, it has to be a hard and fast rule, that we have those properties in some form remediated. You know, we're not talking about the illegal ones, because the majority of them aren't, but it's still a piece of the puzzle that needs to be enforced to a great degree. How we get that enforced, but to say we won't do inspections, or we won't require remediation on every site is contrary to what 1795 had stated. So I don't want us to run down that road. You said that the permit fee would be paid, and let's say subsequently not issued because of whatever reason. We have to be sure that we do get adequate cost recovered for that. We need to know how much is each portion of the process in terms of cost, so we can find that out, and everybody knows, so that when they take that risk, hoping to get by, and they don't make it, they know what that cost is going to be. And it shouldn't, it should not be like we ended up with a non-refundable. It should be a non-refundable. If we've expended the time and the effort to go to this point in the process, we should be able to recover the cost to get to that point, and not back away from it. I know we're talking about transfers now. Under the U.O., did we actually end up transferring any of those original permits to different people?
You know, I don't recall if there was even a way to do that. I don't believe there was. I think they were non-transferable.
They were non-transferable at that time.
Yeah, I think it expressly said that on the...
Okay, then you and I need to talk offline.
Okay.
Okay, because I've got one that I think is a problem.
Supervisor Garm, I mean, Toffenow, I apologize.
Yeah, what?
We've done that road before, I think.
Yeah, sit down. And then you're...
Okay. Go ahead.
You had something on your mind?
Will you finish?
Finish right now.
Sure, go ahead. I just had a question, and I had it written down, I just remembered writing it down. If I walked into your office today and filled out an application for... If I walked into your office today and filled out an application for a permit and going through the whole process, CBCB and permit, do you have any idea how long it would take from today until I ended up walking out of your office with a permit?
I do not. And it really depends on the case. An individual who has a small indoor operation, for example, who has a fully functional permitted cultivation site that has just been under wraps during the ban, would probably end up getting a permit much faster because there's, the building inspection would be quick. The parcel file would demonstrate that there was nothing in any of the buildings that was inconsistent with the permits that had been issued. And that person would probably, depending on how long it takes us to get the CBCB program underway, be able to get a permit relatively quickly, within probably a matter of weeks, perhaps a month. Another person who has, we look at their parcel file and we notice that there's five structures that are residential accessory units that they want to use for commercial purposes. That person's not going to get a permit for many, 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 many months because they're going to have to have all those buildings permitted for their proposed occupancy and which could implicate all kinds of regulatory requirements from emergency access under 4291 of Public Resources Code, water storage under the fire code, they'd have to retrofit the buildings to make them ADA compliant. A person with a grow site like that is probably not going to grow this year. And a person who, I mean, so it really depends on the site. I mean, I kind of gave you two ends of the spectrum. And one person could be, get through pretty quickly, assuming we get our CBCB program up and running because obviously issuance of CBCBs to all the owners and workers is a prerequisite to the issuance of a permit. A person like that who's got all their ducks in a row, who's really vigilant and knows how to comply with state and local regulations and is relatively sophisticated, will get through our program quickly and others will not.
Thank you.
Anything else, Supervisor Garmendy?
I guess I kind of want to poll the board, Supra, just stop there. Is there any interest, I know we'll probably take this up a couple of times, but is there any interest in transferring the funds from, that we've collected to the program at this point? Is there forfeits vote to even talk about that again? If there's not, then we'll just keep going. Gary Dennis, I guess. Questions to you guys?
No, for me at this time.
And you guys, I mean, I don't need to beat a dead horse. You guys know the opinion on that, so. That's all I got.
Supervisor Callaway, did you have anything? Or are you good?
At this time, Supervisor Callaway is good?
Okay. Yeah, I didn't hear, so. This was an informational item? Was there something else?
Yes, I think staff was asking whether we want to have a study session in the future on the three items that he brought up that it issues with.
Absolutely. Would there be anybody against those three items being on the study session in the future? I think, I think that's the way Supervisor Callaway instructed me to do a poll from now on. So with that, with that, nobody saying no, I assume you're all in favor of it. So we definitely are in favor of a study session in the near future and dealing with these three things. And if any issues, I personally, if any other issues come up throughout the processes we work forward, I think it would be a good time to present those along with the three With that, we can move on from that, and we are on, supervisors.
Supervisors, announcements.
In compliance with AB 1234, Chapter 2 Government Code, Section 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, but may also, at the board member's discretion, include any other meetings attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
Supervisor Garmendy, we'll start on your end.
I have nothing to report.
I'll report that I went to the Fish and Game Commission meeting this last Wednesday. Supervisor, or I mean, Marita Callaway also was there with representatives of Patrick for the building and went over some good things they've done up in Murphy's Creek on work that the county property owns and progress. We will be having a kids' fishing game in the future. It's a great day to see all the kids out in Murphy's Creek. We stock it really well, so, you know, you could go fishing there the day after, but it's a really good time to see all the youngsters doing all that. Usually we have that at the beginning of May, I believe, yes. And I'll be cooking, once again, I'll be volunteering to cook hot dogs and sodas, so if you guys wish. Well, no fish at that time. It's, I didn't, I can't serve the fish if I cook it there.
I just asked you.
And also, we, I attended, yes, or yeah, yesterday, it was Monday, the Mother of Job Training Committee meeting. Nothing substantial report, just getting everything in order for this next year. Is there something I can help you with, Supervisor Callaway?
I'm going to try, please bear with me. I was contacted by RCRC. The governor was looking for members for his forest management task force. I recommended Supervisor Garmendy. One, because Supervisor Garmendy's already a RCRC representative in Sacramento for those functions, and he has a lot of forest land in his district. So I thought it was an appropriate match to put Supervisor Garmendy on the forest management task force.
And he doesn't, he has a lot of time. He doesn't have much to do.
And he had, he had some time. I did it.
I'll find enough time.
I'll find time.
For the chair, of course.
Supervisor Toffnelli.
Oh, let's see, yesterday-
You got to spend the day with me.
I spent a lot of time with Marita. We spent time at the Central Sierra Child Support Agency in Jackson. We meet four times a year, and yesterday was the first meeting of the year. And then we spent time at LAFCO last night here, in a LAFCO meeting. And Dennis, there was a item on the agenda about Bar 20 and them taking four lots out of that CSA, if you're aware of it.
Yes, I am.
And LAFCO voted to move it forward. That's all I have.
Supervisor Mills.
Actually, that's CSD. It's part of that CSD, the district there.
That's CSD, yeah.
Yeah, not a CSA. Saturday, we attended the Murphy's Firefighters Appreciation Dinner up in Murphy's, and Monday we were, Monday night, we were at Angels Camp and their acknowledgement of partners. And yeah, that's going to be an interesting situation with that district as it goes forward, the Appaloosa Road District, and I'm sure you'll hear more about it as we move up. So that's all I have.
Thank you. With that, I will-
Sorry, just a quick-
CIO, I apologize, sir.
The debt advisory committee is scheduled for Thursday, a special meeting scheduled on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. The location I originally put out was going to be the Board Overflow Room. We're going to have it in here, and the support documents have been posted online.
Thank you. Any reports from counsel or the clerk?
Would that all adjourn the meeting? Thank you.